Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, commencing at 7:00 p.m. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Kritzer, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Carson, and myself, Councilmember Forsyth. There are four items on tonight's agenda: Joint Meeting with the Planning Commission, Introduction of the Development Services Center Performance Improvement Efforts, Briefing on the 172nd Street Gate Opening Project, and Council Talk Time. Our first item on the agenda is our joint meeting with our planning commissioners. As everyone can see here, I will now kick it off to Mayor Bernie.
Great. Thank you, Council President. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I would like to welcome our Planning Commission to this meeting this evening. We have this joint meeting once a year, and we get to hear what they're up to, what's on their agenda, and some really exciting stuff that's happening in our community. As some people do or don't know, they are the first step in looking at ideas like through our comprehensive plan and other rules and zoning, and everything that goes through our city comes through our Planning Commission before it gets to our city council. And so I really appreciate all of the work that you do with that, and all the work you have coming before you, because we have our comp plan that we're all working on. So I would like to turn it over to the Chair, Susan Weston, to take it over.
So Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, a little early. Okay, Vice Chair. Thank you.
So thank you so much for having us this evening. It is great to come and re-meet all of you and then foster discussion about planning. I wanted to start by just going around the room, and we can all introduce ourselves. Maybe you can say how long you've been in your role, and just to get our planning hats on, think about your neighborhood. Say one thing that you love about it, and one thing that troubles you. So I'm going to go first. I'm Susan Weston. I've been on the Planning Commission for just about a year. One thing that I love about my neighborhood is the kids play outside in the street. It's really fun. One thing that troubles me is it's all 1970s homes, and we've had a lot of trees come down over the last few years. So when it gets hot, it is really hot. Right, we'll go this way, Aparna.
Hello, everyone. I'm Aparna. I've been on the commission for, gosh, five, it's my fifth year now. It feels a lot longer, a lot of work. I live in the Grass Lawn neighborhood, love the parks in the area. What I think would have been nice is if I could walk to a grocery store and pick up stuff. For me, I think getting into the car, it kind of just, it's just outside reach, you know? It's just a couple miles off, but then you carry all the stuff uphill. So for me, that's the big one. Hopefully, our regulations will change, and that's what we're working towards, so.
Mr. Coyle, you have to join us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerilee Anderson. I've been serving on the city council for six years. I live in the Bear Creek, Avondale area, and what I love about my neighborhood is that I am a stone's throw away from a very diverse and close-knit cooperative community in our HOA. So we have some of the very few fourplex units in the city, which is a very unique structure. What I wish for in our neighborhood is better connectivity up to Perrigo Park. It's challenging to walk on Avondale with my dogs, so thanks.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm Vanessa Kritzer, Vice President of the City Council. I've been on the City Council for four years and was on the Planning Commission before that. I think, actually, just serving with only one of you, so wonderful to see so many amazing new faces on the Planning Commission and really respect the work that you all do. I love my neighborhood. I'd say, the thing I love most about it, actually, is just the people and how our neighbors have found ways to connect with each other. And we have a really big diversity of different people in our neighborhood, ranging from both background to age, and it's really cool to see how people come together and connect. I'd say the one thing that I would love to see more of is more frequent bus service, so that I could more often and others could take transit. One of my favorite things is to take the bus down the hill with my daughter and go to the library, but sometimes it's a really long wait to get that bus, so I'd love to see transit come a little more frequently.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Forsyth. I'm the Council President. I also live in Grass Lawn, and I have the exact same thoughts about, I love the park, the ability to take a lunch break and walk to the park and see what's going on there is fantastic. But yeah, walkability to services. I'm a little closer to the grocery store up the hill, but that feeling of carrying all that stuff back home is problematic. I will also add that I would love to see more townhomes in the area, and I think that would be really beneficial to that area in particular.
I'm Tara Van Nijman, and I've been on the Planning Commission. I'm now into my second year. I live in North Redmond, and I do live walking distance to PCC. So that's awesome. I love that. What there's not a ton of up there is parks. I do live next to Einstein, so that kind of ends up doubling as a park, but there are no other real parks that I can walk to.
We're going to start repeating some of the greatest hits on this end of the table. Hi, I'm Melissa Stewart. I've been on the city council for about 18 months, and prior to that, I served on the library board. I live in the Overlake Urban Center, and my neighborhood is very well-connected transit-wise. It's actually how my husband convinced me to move to this lovely city. And we have two light rail stations coming on board, so love, love, love the transit. Wish we had some greater park access and more public places to throw frisbees with our kids and things like that.
My name's David Carson, and I've been on the council since 2008. The thing I love about my neighborhood is that we just have, I have so many great neighbors, and great neighbors make a great neighborhood. So let's see, things that I would, really, the one thing I want to see done is a little bit better access for my neighborhood to be able to get out of our neighborhood at peak times. And so West Lake Samamish is a barrier to that sometimes. I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. I'm Mayor Bernie. I have been in this role for three and a half years. I was on the council for four years prior to that, and on the Parks and Trails Commission before that. I can't remember how many years of that. I live on Education Hill. I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I love that my kids could walk to the elementary, the middle school, and the high school pretty easily from where we live, and that's just always been lovely. I'm with Aparna about having, you know, the ability to walk more easily to some neighborhood retail would be great, a coffee shop or something like that. I can walk to PCC down near you. Yes, it's a couple miles down the hill. That's the problem. You have to go back up the hill when you come home. So, but I love where we live. I just think it's a beautiful, beautiful part of the city.
I'm Sherry Nichols. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission and have served on the Planning Commission for seven and a half years. I live in Education Hill. Like Mayor Bernie, it was great. We moved to, we chose Education Hill because it was Education Hill, and it had great access to schools when my daughter was in school. But I live on the very top of Education Hill, right next to the high school. And so while theoretically I can walk to PCC, it's a long haul back up that hill. And carrying groceries back up that hill is just not going to happen. And while I just got an e-bike, so making it on a bike back up that hill is doable, I'm still a little uncomfortable riding that bike with all the cars. So we'd like to see someplace I can go without having to get in my car.
I am Angie Nuueva Camina. I've been serving on the Planning Commission. I'm in my first year of serving. And I live in downtown Redmond, so I get to walk everywhere that I choose to. So I got to walk here this evening. So I do get to walk to the grocery store and go get my groceries, and it's not an issue. And I absolutely love it. That's why I moved downtown six years ago, and I've been able to firsthand, like, be involved in watching what is happening to how we're growing. The thing that I would love to see change is the safety for our pedestrians. I've watched two of my son's classmates get hit in an intersection on 83rd and 166th. So I'd love to see safety precautions put in place. And while that is most definitely an issue, there are other things that I'm grateful for that we don't have as far as safety issues are concerned in our downtown area. So it's, yes, we have room to grow and things that we can do better, and it's pretty wonderful living downtown.
Hello, everyone. I'm Janine Woodyear. I'm in my first year in the Planning Commission. I live in Education Hill. Love, love, love Education Hill. I've been out there about 18 years, 19 years. The time flies. I love the community. I love the easy access to parks, schools, and trails. Love that. I have a 10-year-old, geez, 10-year-old. What I wish that there would be more of is safer bike lanes. I love to bike. I see a lot of speeding cars on 104th through the school zones. It's not a safe place to walk or to bike, especially during school hours when cars are going double the speed limit.
Awesome. Thank you all. I think our next piece is that we're going to work through some of the things that we've covered this year and what we're looking forward to in the next year. Okay. Did you happen to get that graphic?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to show you my favorite graphic that we get to see every single time we meet, because I insist on it. It really helps me. So most of what we've done in the last year is talking about Redmond 2050. So as you all know, that's our major planning exercise. It's something that happens across the state. We're coordinating Redmond up and down with King County, with Puget Sound Regional Council, with new laws that have come from the state legislature, and then also, and most importantly, all of the feedback that the Planning Department receives across our community. And the way that, this is an immense amount of information, as I'm sure you can picture. The way it's organized is we have a comprehensive plan that sort of sets the vision across the community and where we're going. We have a bunch of functional and strategic plans that have to coordinate with that comprehensive plan. And then there's also things like the zoning code that have to match also. So it's immense amount of work for the Planning Department to put that all together. What we do is we go through each week as plans come online or drafts come online, and just review. So we're looking for gaps. We're looking for things where we think the city should be trying harder or pushing more aggressively. We look for things that haven't quite been captured and try to bring them, like, bubble them up higher. We're looking at policies. And so over the last year, we've been mostly working on what they call Phase One. So you'll see that in that sort of gold piece at the left of the chart. We're looking to wrap that up in the next quarter, and so then we can move and do Phase Two, which is all the rest of it, in time for Redmond 2050 conclusion, which I believe is early 2025. Is that right?
Late 2024.
Late 2024. Okay. So that's the basic structure of what we've been working on. In your packet, you'll see called out individual elements, individual documents that we've been putting together that fit into this model. And so when you see the full bulleted list, that's one way to list it. Those are the actual materials that we've been reviewing, but this is how I picture it, because I just think it's easier to see it when it's a little bit more, like, contained. Additional things that we've worked on this year, we had the remand from City Council for the Redmond Town Center zoning code changes. We had a small set of zoning code changes for affordable housing parking requirements. We've done a fair amount of business, so like training and equity and election, several new people coming in, et cetera. Going forward for the next year, we're really looking at Redmond 2050 still. So there's a brief list of just things that we plan to be working on. Again, most of that silver in the chart is where we're really looking. And then as we wrap things up, we will send them to you to review.
There we go. Sorry. So next on the agenda is going to be a staff introduction to complete neighborhoods and middle housing. And with that kind of information, it will just help set up the council and commission discussion. So I'm going to spend about five to 10 minutes just go through this, just some pictures, and just, basically, it's just really background and context to kind of set up discussion. So what we're talking about is complete neighborhoods. A neighborhood where most human needs and many desires are located within a comfortable walk-in distance. There's different terms for this that you can kind of see in the graphic here. We've heard the term five, 10, 15-minute communities that sometimes defined as one kilometer, one mile, one and a half mile. It can also necessarily just be specifically walk-in. It can be jog-in, a bicycle, an e-bike, a scooter, wheelchair, different things like that. But generally, it gets to the neighborhood where these kind of amenities are within that kind of casual, close distance that doesn't require, like, an automobile or anything to get there conveniently. So through our Redmond 2050 planning process, just want to kind of iterate some of the, reiterate some of the things that we've heard from the community. People want comfortable access to more things outside of Redmond Centers without a car. Complete neighborhoods, they find are more equitable and sustainable, and that the city should explore taking this from a concept to implementation. Also, want to discuss, and for everybody tonight, is the concept of middle housing. And what is middle housing? Homes that are at a middle scale between detached, single-family houses and large multifamily complexes. Examples are everything from the two to six-plexes, courtyard apartments, cottage clusters, and townhomes. This graphic right here kind of gives that kind of a good visual example of what we talk about when we define middle housing, and that's those ones in blue. So what we've heard, and this kind of relates to the Housing Action Plan, is that Redmond is a highly desirable place to live. People want more housing options beyond single-family attached, detached, or apartments, but that ownership housing is unaffordable for many households, and that the housing options should reflect the diversity of the household types and sizes in Redmond. That goes everywhere to recently graduated students, to seniors, to large families, small families, et cetera, multi-generational families. So tonight, for the focus, is looking at what are our land use priorities for neighborhoods? Those residential land uses, non-residential land uses, and just kind of what the physical environment, our trees, benches, kind of sidewalks, with sidewalks. But more importantly, the intensity and form. So we're going to kind of look at some of the different options, and then hopefully, part of your discussion was what options are appropriate for Redmond. So now I'm just going to go into some of these different housing residential and non-residential types for discussion. And then when you just move into the discussion, we can go back to some of these pictures if you prefer for any discussion points. So this first example is a six-plex. These are very, just kind of typical examples here. And most of these photos are from the Seattle region. We tried our best to also find some examples in Redmond, but not every example's here. This is an example of courtyard apartments, and you can see in the upper right, we have some of those in downtown Redmond. These are typically can be medium or large, you know, can be two to four stories, a little bit more quaint. And really, the main thing is having the shared courtyard. Next up the scale are townhomes. These can also be medium or large size, generally at two to four stories, and also just usually come in kind of like a row kind of configuration, and you can have different variations in the length. It can just be two units, it can sometimes be 10 or a whole block. But also, we have these kind of non-residential types. So example here is, this is probably kind of an older type of structure, but where you have a business kind of on the first level and residents up above, kind of in a shared house. And this is probably more typical in the 19th century. I believe this is actually in Georgetown, Seattle, so this is kind of an old kind of structure. But, you know, these still kind of exist in some variations and, you know, can still be developed. And they may not be necessarily used for residential either. And that kind of also gets to repurposed homes, and we actually have a section of downtown Redmond that has some of those. This is right here on 165th. And these, as noted, is formerly residential structures. These are usually ones that were in typical, were typically in old downtowns or on the fringes, and as the downtowns and commercial areas expanded, became more Next are what we call commercial clusters. These are the low-rise commercial buildings, generally surrounded by predominantly residential neighborhoods. This picture shows Tangletown and Wallenford. And a lot of times, yeah, these buildings can be mixed-use. Sometimes they're not. And traditionally, they're sometimes located along, say, old trolley lines or streetcar lines, and kind of how they were developed to kind of serve these kind of gathering points in some of these neighborhoods. And similar to that is what we call the commercial corridor-type businesses. These are just strips of businesses that kind of follow a linear street at the edge of residential areas. And as noted, they follow terials, transit access, and usually have more multifamily in the area and generally serve residential areas. This is an example of East Lake in Seattle. And the more highest intense kind of uses that we use in examples, we call the mixed-use type hub. These are the cluster of higher-density residential and non-residential uses, or as we call mixed-use buildings. You can see that they're mid-rise, include multifamily, usually a close-to-access, transit-oriented development, et cetera. And this is an example of the RED 160 in downtown Redmond. So, discussion. So this is just to help frame, but we just kind of say, what types of non-residential uses should be allowed and mainly residential uses? What scale and intensity of non-residential uses would be appropriate? And what questions or concerns do council members and commissioners have that should be addressed and planned for middle housing and complete neighborhoods? And that concludes my little short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Anderson, do you have a question?
Just asking him to put the questions back up on the, so we can see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to dive in? Is there questions for the council? Thank you, Council President.
I'll dive in and be the first to go. All right. So what types of non-residential uses shall be allowed? In my mind, I feel like corner stores where you can grab a quick snack, you can grab that head of lettuce that you just forgot for your dinner salad. Maybe you can get a haircut, grab a coffee. Those kinds of businesses should be allowed in our residential areas. The scale, what's the size of, I think what we saw in the presentation, that type of scale, where it's like the homes that have been kind of converted into a business with a living accessibility up top, I think that makes sense. I think there's been a lot of talk on council about really kind of doing away with our zoning codes in that sense. So I think we still want to keep some of that charm and feel, but just making sure that those, that it's appropriate to have these kind of businesses in those I did make some notes here. Oh, so the triplexes and the six-plexes that were shown in the photo, yes, love those, but let's have better design than those, because wow. And then I also want to make sure we're being mindful of our sidewalk sizes, making sure that our wheelchair paths are very accessible. Sometimes we have tree cutouts that make someone in a wheelchair or with mobility issues or a stroller have to kind of do a slalom. And let's not make it more challenging to live in those areas than it needs to be. And then questions and concerns for middle housing? Yeah, just, I think we just, we need more of it. And I think the biggest concern for me when living, I currently live in a townhouse situation, and my biggest concern is my neighbors and not being responsible with fire. So leaving things on the stove in my community, exactly, we've had, since I've lived there, there's been three major fires, and it is a concern I have every day. So making sure that we're having the best fire codes, the best planning for safety. I know we already did some sprinkler updates, which super grateful for from our fire department, but yeah, that is a big concern for me.
Great, thank you. And I just want to mention that Councilmember Fields has joined us as well. And you should know that our fire codes are excellent, and your building would not be built in that manner if it was built today.
I absolutely know that.
Other comments from council? I'm going to go around and pick on you if you don't raise your hand, so I can just do it that way, too. Let's go with Council Vice President Kritzer, then, because no one's raising their hand. I'll just go around that way.
Oh, well, I was going to say, I feel like we should popcorn back and forth a bit with the Planning Commission. Actually, I will kick it off to say, I think, there was multiple people that brought up, as we were going around, about, you know, what we desire in our neighborhood. And I didn't duplicate, but I think a couple people said it well about wanting to be able to have, in our neighborhoods, access to some of these more commercial uses in our residential areas, being able to walk to a coffee shop or corner store, and kind of thinking about how do we plan for that. So I guess a question I have for the commission is just how much you've already discussed this topic, and what have been some of the big themes that have come up so far, especially in terms of potential solutions. I'm just not sure where you are in terms of how far down the road on this discussion you are, but I'm really excited that we're talking about it, because it's been on my mind probably the past four years. I've been on council and even before for thinking about livability in our city.
We've been discussing this a lot. This is something that I think we're all very interested in. I think there's something that we're hearing a lot from the community that people want walkable neighborhoods. And so we've been discussing, there aren't clear and obvious solutions, but how can, and we can't dictate a solution, but how can we open up the plan to allow for a variety of options? I think the, one of the biggest challenges, I would love to hear from council on this, is one of the biggest challenges is the way our code and plan are currently arranged. One of the big barriers to something like this are parking requirements. You know, for this to work, really, we need to get rid of parking requirements, but that's going to raise some ire among some people in the community. But, you know, if the point is to create walkability, then we can't do this and accommodate cars. I mean, we've got to put walkability first. So that's one of the big challenges, is parking requirements and getting rid of those. And, you know, there are things like, you know, allowing for, you know, retail in your home, like, you know, some sort of like a coffee shop in your garage. I mean, you know, meaning all the health codes and everything. But so we've talked about a lot of different options, you know? Can we do things in our parks? Can we utilize some of the spaces? And our, you know, our school campuses have a lot of open spaces. Can we do that? You know, how can we? The problem is, how do we take this land that is being underutilized but we don't own and try to open up opportunities?
Yeah, Aparna?
Yeah, it's night. Sorry. I want to say we had a lot of discussions on this, but I think primarily all of us have the sense that there needs to be more flexibility in how we are doing things. We don't know how the city is going to change. So we need a little more flex, a lot more flexibility. And so it's like, if you say, which type of housing do we pick? It would be all of the above, right? We cannot say that this works or this doesn't work right now. What we need is to lower the barriers for all these things to happen, and then you evaluate it side-by-side, case-by-case basis, right? And from a And from a commercial standpoint, personally, I am all for flexibility and adaptability because that's what makes a resilient city. Some of this new stuff which will get built will last, what, 20 to 50, 60 years even? So we need to kind of think in terms of how those uses would change when, well, let's say none of us are here anymore, right? So we're not going to be able to do that. So all we can do is try to figure out what is the loosest interpretation, what is a bare bone interpretation and not be overtly prescriptive, right? And so that means we should, everything should be mixed use. Everything should be multi-use, like all civic facilities. And I think we've all talked about this ad nauseam and overlay and so on, where, you know, even at higher densities, you're going to have to repurpose some spaces so that day in, day out, those spaces have value for the community. So that, like Chair was saying, we do need to have that in terms of the schools, the library spaces. We have to have agreements with all the civic agencies so that we are not sitting on a dead space like the library. After hours, what happens, right? It's a parking lot, it's a space which isn't being really utilized, but it's prime location, right? So it's going to require us reaching out, but it's also requiring us to be more, I don't know, open minded, I guess, you know? So.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Perna. I was going to share this later with the council, but I'll go ahead and bring it up now. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Spokane, and as part of that, we, we took several tours around the city. And I will skip over some details that are really exciting to me, and if you want the full story, you can come and get it later. But for the moment, I will just share, that's exactly one of the projects that we were able to visit was a partnership that began because the city had three acres that the school district wanted, and the school district had 15 acres that the city wanted. Those were not equal. There could not be a direct exchange. So over time and through relationship building and a willingness to collaborate and bring on a third partner, the library, we actually visited multiple buildings that have now been created and publicly funded through a very well-supported voter bond to create all this additional value in their city. And it was very, very inspiring. And so I have watched your, your conversations on the bodegas and the coffee shops, and I say, yes, yes, yes. And when it comes to developing a plan that also leaves open the door for us to be collaborative with the other institutions that operate in our city, yes, please, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Chair.
What Chair Nichols said, I just can't stress enough that there's, if you don't open up the, if you have to accommodate cars, there's not going to be enough room to have the number of people that are required to sustain businesses out in single family near, what are currently single family neighborhoods. I mean, it's about economics. And those bodegas aren't going to open unless there's enough people to support them, which requires density, which requires fewer cars. And so I kind of come back to, what's the chicken and what's the egg? And how do we push people in that direction? You know, if you build all the transit, will they come? Or do you have to take their parking places away and then make them go to transit? And those are things that as elected officials, it's a little bit harder for you guys to manage because people don't want to hear that they're not going to have the opportunity to have their cars in their parking spaces at, at will. But they say they want the complete neighborhood. So those things are in tension with each other. And, you know, it's a, I, I think there has to be some pushing that you can't build all the roads and build all the parking and expect people to give up their cars. They won't. And all those things are working in partnership with each other. You've got to have the density to support the businesses or those, those business owners just won't open.
Yes, Angie.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking about when I've worked with businesses in, throughout the region, throughout the county, in starting up, I helped several of them be put to bed during pandemic, but I also helped several launch during the pandemic, which I was told that will never fly. And some of them have turned out to be some of the most successful businesses in the city. And the only reason why they were was complete and utter buy-in by the community as a stakeholder. So speaking to your point about parking and if, if they have the, the parking, it would be successful only if the community had complete and utter buy-in as a stakeholder to be able to, to sustain those businesses. And then I think about, you know, what are, are incentives that new businesses will have coming into a city? Different cities have different things. And are we prepared, is that something that we're ready to consider? Is what incentives are we able to give, if any, to a completely new concept for these new businesses coming in?
Thank you. Yes?
I would, I would dovetail on that comment that I think what we're discussing, the whole idea about stakeholder buy-in, I think is really key as we go forward with the 2050 plan. Because a lot of the things that we're discussing, especially on the topics tonight, may seem like really big changes, but actually likely will make the changes. And then you'll have small things pop up, right? Like when we talk about missing middle housing, it's not like everything's transforming overnight. It just means that every so often, you'll realize suddenly in your neighborhood, there's a house that looks like a house, but it actually is a couple house, a couple house, homes for people, right? Or if, you know, we allow suddenly in one place that used to be a home, you have a coffee shop, right? And, and that we're going to have that change. And I think the way that we communicate, you know, how, where we're going and how it's really answering what our community is asking for is going to be key. And I think as we develop our final work on 2050 through the next year and a half, it's going to be critical to get that community feedback on these ideas as they develop. And just want to say in advance to our planning commission, thank you, since I know you all will do the public hearings on a lot of this and be gathering that community feedback. So we'll be looking to you to be able to tell us, like, what are some of the concerns? How would we want to refine it? What, and to really go out and I think hopefully work with our planning staff to make sure that we're reaching into all the neighborhoods to get their feedback on how we create a policy that really brings our community along with us as we do these more ambitious things and look towards where our city wants to go. So thank you all.
Are there some commissioners that haven't had a chance to say anything yet? Or Susan, would you like to share?
All right, I'll chime in. One thing that I really like about this question is I think it's a really easy question to answer when we're talking about the centers and the new development. And it's just, it's really exciting. We're sort of starting from scratch in a lot of areas. So like, there's a lot of consensus, what looks vibrant and what would feel good to live in when we're talking about the centers. What gets super tricky is the neighborhoods where we're talking really about introducing middle housing into something that was designed for a very like cul-de-sac centric development philosophy, where it's like everyone has their cars, they park them in their driveway. The roads don't connect. There's, it's just, it's a very, the details are going to matter a lot there. So it's if you're introducing, for example, a business into a neighborhood like that, and we've been talking about things like trash collection and what does that look like? Parking is the obvious one. The density piece is absolutely, like, are there places that have more density within these neighborhoods that would still be walkable? So maybe you're not like walking all the way to, or busing or whatever, all the way to a retail center, but it's still, you're not that far off of the main paths. So how do you get people actually there? And right now, in some ways, our zoning code is incredibly hyper-specific. So you can get into like what sort of food prep materials you can have in backyards or like smoke management or we've talked about like the, the degreasing oil stuff for like catering operations. So it's, we're sort of trying to think, like, would that actually be nice to have if you're in a place where people think of themselves as being very residential? But also, how do we kind of thread that line where we're saying, okay, we want the vibrant, we want the walkable, we want absolutely more housing, especially the middle housing? So how do you just chart that line? And I do think the community stakeholder feedback is incredibly important in that because when people think through the details, they do have reactions. So, thank you.
I'd like to add to this because it's something I, I feel quite passionate about. And as I reflect back on the conversation we had, we, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this very topic, and that is, how do you retrofit a large segment of the city of Redmond that would require retrofitting to make, to bring this vision to life? Because you do have the issue of how do you bring in the walkability factor, which is businesses? When you have the reality that bringing that in also changes the fabric. So what is the, the balance that you don't have crime, you don't have garbage, you don't have other challenges that you have to solve for? And, and we did, we did have the, the conversation around the, the reality is, you know, when you go to downtown Redmond, and I'll look at where Trader Joe's is an example, people will drive from one end of the parking lot to the other end. So in something like that, so that is a real scenario. And so as you start thinking about how do you retrofit neighborhoods and how you connect things, the bike lanes, which is a big issue, the walkability, how do you bring in the, the corner, the corner cafe? And do so in a way which are really truly going to encourage me and others to walk three blocks when you're not even walking across, driving, when you're not even walking across the parking lot? So we spent quite a bit of time talking about how do you, how do you do that? And I think a lot of where we centered on is, is part of it's the community, the community vibe that you have, because that's what gets people out of their cars and gets people walking. So that as you start thinking about how do you thread the line, walkability, drive, walkability, bikeability, transit, and really kind of retrofit it? We spent quite a lot of time in that. And it's, it's, it's a huge challenge because you're, you're peeling and repeeling the onion on that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. So that, what you just said strikes me more than most of this conversation. All the, I appreciate all of the conversation, but I think where the city has a responsibility, and we've talked about this on council for the past seven or eight months, is we have to create that safe environment for people to walk and, and, and know that they can walk without risking their health and their lives and their children's lives, and they should be able to bike. So that, we can, and it was an interesting convers, sort of a split here between being overly prescriptive and then when we start talking about parking, where we're going to be very prescriptive. And I quote songs a little too often on From the Dias, but it, what occurred to me was a Sting song that said, "If it's a future world you fear, we hold tomorrow's seeds right here." And, and it is, it doesn't happen, as someone said, in a month or a day. It happens over a decade. And I think there are times when we need to be very prescriptive and there are times when we need to be flexible. And understanding how people live, i.e., how do we get them to walk and not drive across Trader Joe's parking lot? How do we, how do we encourage that? And I really do believe it, first thing is safety. And I think that the city has to focus much, much harder on creating a safe world for what we want to see happen. But thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Great conversation, comments, and I'll just add a few things that I did not hear in terms of things that I think might be feasible. I think I appreciated Chair Nichols' comments quite a bit, as well as all the other commissioners on some ideas on how to think about this. But I'm really trying to think what's realistic for like a home-based business if that retrofit might be the first barrier to, to consider. Some things that might be nice to have in your neighborhood would be a daycare facility, performing arts facilities or studios where you could bring your children and have them have activities within indoor spaces, pet grooming, and that's a big one. And then also on the food side, I would love to be able to go get a cup of coffee or brunch or avocado toast or whatever serves you, your fancy, but maybe from a food truck or something like that with a mobile cleanup unit to solve some of those problems. So one of the things that strikes me about this conversation is I'm hoping that during your planning commission meetings, you're also thinking about what's in the way of us doing any of these things right now, because it might be possible. And, you know, we're here to support you as well. So again, thank you for your service on the commission and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, yes.
I just wanted to actually give a shout out to staff. Staff's been doing a fantastic job of doing outreach across several issues at the same time. I, I don't know how they keep track of everything, but, and they're very patient with all our questions, and they've done a lot of heavy lifting here. I mean, we can come in at the top level and say, hey, you know what? We, we have these questions about this report, but they actually generate that report and they do the studies. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Glenn, even though he makes us work very hard. I, I really appreciate the whole staff here, so.
I would just say thank you, but on behalf of the whole city of Redmond staff, because it is a team effort, I'm just the coordinator with the planning commission, but there's whole big group of hundreds of staff people that actually make this happen. So, but on their behalf and our behalf, thank you.
Are there, are there comments this evening? Any other council members want to answer the questions they have asked? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, I mean, we're not the only city doing this, right? So we should, and, and we're talking in generalities, we're talking about the problems. We've got not, the conversation has not got to a place where we can be specific, but I have to believe that other jurisdictions have got to the specifics. So in your work, you will be looking at both successes and failures, correct? I see heads shaking, thank you.
Yes. One other, another thing that we're, that we're talking about and considering is the change in demographics in our city. We've got a generation where we've been, mine included, where we've been reliant upon cars, and this was what we knew. We're seeing fewer and fewer 16-year-olds getting their license. We've got Metro that has, you know, free Orca cards for students. So they're already starting to train them up to be less reliant upon automobiles. Now, of course, there's tons of students at Redmond High that still have a brand-new car right now. But we're also seeing as our average age is, I believe, 33, is that correct for our city, about right? And we've got more dense housing, then we're seeing fewer and fewer people being reliant on cars. So I, I think that we're heading in the right direction to be able to make this change. And we'll still make some people very uncomfortable by doing it.
Any other couns, oh, yes, commissioners?
I'm going to beat my drum one more time about food trucks and semi-permanent food trucks. I went to Portland and, oh my God, I want it. And you talk about what are the barriers? I don't know what the barriers are, but they exist somewhere because the entrepreneurs down in Oregon have figured it out and gotten through those barriers, and the entrepreneurs in Washington haven't figured it out yet. And not, not to their fault, just saying there, there are barriers somewhere. And for, you know, probably most of you have been down in Oregon and seen that. And it's, I mean, you talk about community and vibrant and walkable, the, the way they partner with the breweries and have these semi-permanent structures is something I
Any, anyone else have any comments this evening? I mean, happy to wrap it up early if, if we're feeling good. All right. Would anyone like to, on the commission, like to wrap us up? Ms. Vice Chair?
Thank you so much for this tonight. It's great to hear what's on your minds. I love this conversation. It's a topic that we really enjoy talking about, so it's great to kind of take it on the road, get more opinions and more insights. If you have anything further that you want to reach out and send our way, we would be happy to hear it. And also to your point, I just really, if there are things that pop up where you hear of things that are really working well in other places, that is always interesting. You have a lot of people here who really like that sort of detail, will really pay attention to it. So thank you for your time, and we appreciate the conversation. So thank you for your time, and we appreciate the conversation.
And I just want to say thank you once again to all of you for taking your time to volunteer to do this really important work for our community, and thank you to the staff as well, Glenn, not just you, but all of them. And I want to thank the council for their good questions and conversation this evening. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute break and transition to our next item on our agenda, and I'll hand it back over to Council President Forsyth.
Sure. The next item will be introduction of the Development Services Center Performance Improvement Effort, and we will see you all back here at two minutes after eight o'clock.
There you go. Thank you.
And your audio is clear.
Thank you, Chip. Our next item on the agenda is introduction to the Development Services Center Performance Improvement Effort. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will be introducing the item.
Thank you so much, Council President Forsyth and members of the council and mayor. So glad for us to be here this evening. I do have just a couple of PowerPoint slides just to share with you, so I'm going to get those up. All right. So, good evening again. Tonight, I'm representing a team of quite a few individuals who come together and represent the constellations of departments responsible for the Development Services line of business. And that includes the Executive Office, Public Works, Fire, and Planning and Community Development. And I am also joined at the table by Jason Lynch, who is our Deputy in Planning and Community Development, who oversees the permitting, inspection, and code enforcement portions of the Development Services Center line of business. He's also the city building official, so he takes very seriously our obligations for safe buildings and also streamlining our permitting process. There we go. So, purpose tonight is to follow up on the budget discussion we had on permit streamlining. You talked about it. It seemed like almost every session that I attended, a budget conversation, and also to introduce the performance improvement effort for the Development Services Center that we've recently branded and initiated. So, just want to give a little bit of background and project overview. First of all, our comprehensive plan directs us to evaluate the permit system performance. It's actually evident in many sections and chapters and elements of our comprehensive plan, in our environmental, our economic vitality section, public participation section, the comp plan framework, and many other places. Also, it's been identified as important to streamline our permitting process to accomplish objectives that are included in our Housing Action Plan and our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan as well. It's also connected to the mayor's vision of creating a connected community that enhances livability and sustains the environment. An effective and efficient development services line of business is essential to delivering on that vision. And for your part, the budget included quite a few investments that actually will help us advance the performance improvement effort that we're initiating now. So, that included the Development Services Fee Study. You'll be hearing more about that from Finance. They've initiated that work. Jason and many of his staff are working very closely with Finance to advance the financial principle of having our customers pay for the services that we provide. We also had an FTE that was dedicated to a Process Improvement Management position. We're currently recruiting for that position. And then, you might also recall that in the Business Technology Investment Program, that you also put a very substantial investment towards our permit system upgrades. So, you might also ask, so why is the work that we're doing important right now? What's the driving force at this point in time? I think more families than ever need housing in our city, and housing has reached a crisis level. So, housing demand is one of the reasons we're focusing on this effort. Development cost has been escalating over time, and the city needs to do its part to control its contribution to those costs. They're experiencing increased interest rates, increasing material costs, increasing labor costs. So, the city shouldn't be a barrier to them achieving their development objectives, because with those objectives, we also achieve many public benefits. So, private development is essential to us in actually realizing the vision that's included in our comprehensive plan. Sadly, the pace of development has also decreased a bit. We're seeing that those interest rates and those economic headwinds are having a result on our permit volumes. On the upside, that gives us some staffing capacity to dedicate to this process, because without the expertise and input from the staff that are closest to the work, it would be very difficult for us to advance this effort at this time. You also heard during the pandemic that we had problems with staffing levels. Our staffing levels and staff turnover has kind of stabilized over the last six months, I would say. We're really getting staff onboarded, getting their feet wet, and many of the new ones are eager to bring their experience forward and share ideas for us how we can do things in different ways. Finally, also, the legislature, as you know, included many mandates this year on city efforts and city requirements for local project review, and that included timeline constraints that, starting in 2025, could carry penalties if we fail to meet our timeline objectives. So, all in all, the project goals, we are consistent with the comprehensive plan on wanting to deliver predictability, consistency, and timeliness in our project review. We've created, okay, we've essentially created a project approach that you see here. We broke it down into manageable pieces, and then they're also rooted in the city values of commitment to service, integrity, accountability, and welcoming. It's aimed at cultivating a culture of exceptional customer service and that delivers permit review and inspection in a timely, consistent, and predictable manner, and seeks opportunities to consistently improve. The next steps in our project, actually, we're calling these, referring to these as buckets, when we refer to customer service and facilitation, organization and oversight, clear codes and standards, smooth process, and staff support. Those are the smaller increments that we're going to use to manage this effort. In your packet materials, we've talked about captured feedback that we've received since I've been at the city, and actually based on prior audits that were done on our permit system, to describe work program efforts where we should focus our priorities to begin with. That essentially work plan has been, we are starting to share it and shop the work program around to our stakeholders. In May, we did present the work program to One Redmond Government Affairs. We also have a bi-monthly meeting with the master builders, and we presented this material to them in May as well, and have asked for their feedback. We've also presented it to some of our larger employers, Microsoft, some of the businesses in our kind of space and satellite constellation of businesses, and we will also try and engage our small business owners. I thought that the comments that you received from some of the planning commissioners were salient in this regard, because what we are looking for is what are the barriers that are keeping us from achieving the outcomes that we desire? And those barriers, we will really work to systematically remove and then ferret out opportunities and tools to ensure that we're meeting the timelines that we have promised to our community, as well as achieving the outreach and community involvement that is expected by the people who live here. So, with that, that's the presentation materials that we have. There's more materials provided in your packet, but we can answer any questions that you may have. And if the council has questions on the work program elements that were included in your packet materials, or has feedback on priorities, we would be happy to hear those as well.
Thank you so much. Questions from council members? Comments, concerns? Councilmember Fields.
So, when I think in terms of project, and then, as you pointed out, barriers to success in a project is, I think, a really important part of the management of that project. I'm not clear on what are the three or four main changes that you want to see. Something, when I think in terms of a project, I think of the other side, which is a change from status quo to future status. What three main things can you characterize for me that you would like to see changed?
Sure. I think that's embodied in the project goals. So, predictability is one. Someone should be able to ask any person in the permit system, the permit processing system or inspection system, a question and receive the same answer. They should also, so that probably actually goes to consistency a little bit better, predictability with respect to timelines, because developers rely on us to tell them how long a process will take, and if we take longer, they may increase their carrying costs. So, essentially, creating timeline expectations. Those were actually prescribed by the state in Senate Bill 5290. So, essentially, embedding those timelines, creating expectations around those timelines, monitoring, and then delivering on those timelines. And then, lastly, just that timeliness component. So, and a culture of customer service.
If I can, just a quick follow-up. And I get what you said, and I understand it. But again, and maybe I'm driving down to a level that you're not ready for, or maybe you don't think you need, but I'm still thinking in terms of change. I'm sure that when we set this up six or seven years ago, those aspirations about predictability and timeliness were all values that somebody had in mind way back when. The question I have is, what do we expect to see in measurable terms in change? Are we talking about consistency being, you know, only 4% of the time we're inconsistent? Or 30% of the time, we're inconsistent? I'm trying to understand what we're going to be on the other side of this.
Sure. So, right now, our timelines are not predictable. So, we will set timelines, and we will measure those timelines. For instance, a typical measure is we will meet X timeline for these permit types 80% of the time. So, we will come up with performance measures for each of the changes we are trying to make. With respect to consistency, for instance, some of the lack of consistency that has been created is a result of the number of hands that are kind of cooks in the kitchen. That wasn't done for seven, 10, 14, 20 years ago, because people thought it was a bad idea, but it slowed the process down. So, it will be essentially reducing the number of touches on the permit system and the number of people who have to be involved.
That's a specific change in my mind.
Correct.
The number of touches. And when you say, "We can't predict the timeline," we really can't tell somebody when they come in for a permit, you know, it's going to be six months, or five years, or 30 days? So, we can't do that?
We don't, well, two things. One is, we have timelines that we are supposed to meet. We are not predictably meeting them. So, that's the first thing. The other thing is, we don't have the tools to measure the way the state wants us to. So, actually, our reporting, and this is a TIS-supported function as well, in that TIS is going to help us upgrade our systems, our actual platforms for permitting, so that they are taking information, using information the way it needs to be. We're inputting the right information. We're holding staff accountable for inputting that information. We're monitoring to make sure that information is accurate. And then, at the end of the day, we will also be reporting out, we have to do an annual report, that our actual system right now is not capable of doing.
That'd be interesting. I'd be interested in the measurements. Going from no measurements to measurements is always difficult, because you don't have a, you can't see the improvement, because you've never measured where you were at all that well.
So, we aren't without measurement. But it's interesting, if you go to the budget documents and look at the measurements, the performance measures that we have, for instance, for Development Services, or for inspections, or for some of the other functions that are related to Development Services, you know, that old adage, "You have to be careful what you measure," because people work to that to measure that outcome. So, we're trying to make the performance measures more meaningful and actually drive the outcomes that we're trying to achieve, as opposed to having measures that we report every year and check the boxes and say, "We've complied with that measure." We want our measures to actually incent us to improve over time.
Got it. Thank you.
I was quick on the draw for both of you. I think I saw Councilmember Critzer first, and then Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you very much for the work on this and the presentation. I definitely appreciate the thought around how this is linked to affordability, and in particular, I think, I applaud the effort to be able to figure out how we can create more efficiencies in terms of time, because that's what I hear a lot as feedback, especially from those who are doing development in this area, is that longer times actually leads to higher costs, which then get really passed on to those who live within those multifamily buildings and contributes to our affordability crisis. So, where we can do our role in that, I think that's great. And I'm curious, following up a little bit on Councilmember Fields's questions, is whether you can share with us which pieces within this very robust work you think are going to be the things that move the needle the most in terms of affecting that, those kind of costs, cost factors, and issues that would affect affordability in our city?
So, I think one area that is going to improve significantly, there will be some disruption in the short term, but are the clear codes and standards work program item. Our codes and standards sometimes hearken to a time that was Redmond that doesn't look like it does today. And our codes and standards, you've heard me say before, have been suffering from some deferred maintenance over time, really bringing those into a modernized format, accessible, you know, so everything's on the web, people can serve themselves and exercise self-help without even entertaining conversation with a person here, and then when they have the information they need but still need information, they can contact us. But those standards and details that have been with the city for some time are in the process of being updated. And Director Burt has been, with his work on, in conjunction with the city engineer, developing a program, for instance, that will annually look at the deviations that we routinely process, whether those deviations really need to be changed into a code standard that is accepting of the deviations that we're seeing. So, we plan on taking a very deliberative approach to those updates. But the comp plan update in Redmond 2050 is going to be the start of that work, and then the process improvements that go with them, and then the standards and details that Director Burt and the city engineer are working on.
Thank you. And that touches a little bit on my second question, which is, looking through all of these plans, I'm curious, because some I can see clearly they're going to involve council, and then some seem like they can be done administratively. What percentage would you say are going to require us to take action, and how much are you able to do within your own department?
So, I think an awful lot of it, actually, clear codes and standards and smooth process are probably going to be the ones that will involve the most council action. The work program is intended to be all of the work we need to do. So, for instance, council is not going to have a tremendous amount of input onto staff support. We need to create a more robust training program. Recognition program would be great. Some of the policies that are contained in the personnel manual need to be updated. Those are all being done at the director's team level with the HR department. So, those are internal work that is led by, for instance, the mayor and the executive's The process regulations and procedures are contained in the Redmond zoning code and in the municipal code in some cases, like the MFT program from last year, and those will all require either planning commission recommendation and council approval, or council approval.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I had a similar question, so all that's left is a couple of comments, I think, which is all to say, this is so exciting to know that we were approving these items in the budget for you all at the beginning of December, and then by May, you were already presenting this huge body of work to the Government Affairs Committee at One Redmond, and you're here with us in June. That speaks, I have like some suspicions about either this truth was already so known in the everyday bones of the folks who work on your teams, or you spent a lot, a lot of time on it in a concentrated amount of time. Either way, it's a very impressive body of work, and I think that we want the predictability and some of the metrics that have been discussed earlier. But embedded in here is a lot of culture change, too, and that is really exciting. And I almost think that we'll know you are succeeding when either we don't hear the feedback from the development community we hear today, or they've moved on to a different piece of feedback about a different thing entirely, because this is a long game in some senses. I just want to point out, because the intersectional and cross-functional work that you all have done to come up with these new community service standards, for instance, getting to a culture of yes and problem-solving, clear is kind, get to know quickly if that is the answer, eliminating silos, this on paper is the gold standard. We want that for all of our government, and we want everyone in our city who is interacting with our government to experience these same things. So, just enthusiasm is all that's left, because my colleagues asked great questions, but thank you, thank you for your work on this. Very excited.
I think, thank you. And you'd be happy to know that One Redmond Government Affairs and the members that attend that group actually were, I think both they and master builders were encouraged by the comprehensive nature of the things that we included in the work program, and they could see their comments reflected in the work that is in, in the comments that are in the work program. And the first step is for helping your stakeholders feel heard, and I think that we're on a path to a good process with them.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Just a quick comment, and you and I had a little bit of exchange on what I'm going to say before, which is, yes, we do want the process to be more efficient, more timely, more predictable, and we do, in fact, want to partner with our developers, but we also don't want these standards to be diminished or degraded. And I think that you and I talked about that, and I just want to make that point again, that you're on it, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Absolutely. It's not about lowering our standards. It's making them more clear, more concise, and essentially being able to communicate the why behind what we're doing effectively, so that developers know what the target is.
Thank you. I will add in that I think that this is going to be really beneficial to not only staff, but to the community, that having that predictability has been something I think most of us have heard about for a while, and I appreciate that, all the background that's gone into this. I know it's been a pain point for your staff and your team as well, so I think this is just going to make everyone's lives easier, and I think it's going to be fantastic. It brought up some other policy ideas for me, so I will bring those up offline, send those over to you. I did want to point out that I love the, like, looking for examples from other jurisdictions and the smooth process. I think that, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We can learn from our neighbors, and I think that's really smart for us to be doing as well. So, any other comments from council members? All right, seeing none. Thank you all very much. Was there an ask for this, or it was just informational?
No, it was just, we were informational and...
Just wanted to verify.
It was informational, and just to show you that we heard what you said during the budget process, we're making progress, and thank you for your kind comments this evening, and appreciate your support when we come back with code changes that will make these changes a reality.
Great. Thank you so much.
More to come. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. All right. Next up is our briefing on the 172nd Street Gate Opening Project. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, will be introducing the item, and I will try to talk slower to give you some time to get settled. Fantastic. Welcome.
Oh, red means on. Okay, that's a change. Thank you. Let me pull this slide up.
And while we're waiting, I'll let everyone know that if you happen to notice that the school crossing lights were still on today and yesterday, our staff have fixed that. So, for our viewing public who have been slightly annoyed that school's out, the lights are still on. It's corrected now. Thank you to the public works staff.
Good evening, council members. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, joined this evening by Paul Cho, who's our Traffic Operations Safety Engineering Manager, Patty Criddle, our Traffic Operations Engineering Supervisor, and Gina Schroeder, our Traffic Safety Program Administrator. My apologies for not being here last week. I was traveling internationally and didn't have an opportunity to attend. But I understand a couple of outcomes that we're looking for today. One, I'm going to give you background information on how we got to this point with this project, and then also what we're looking for as the next steps to implement this 2324 adopted CIP project. So, to orient you where we're at on the map, we're looking at North Redmond. Down below here is Clara Barton Elementary School. You have 122nd, and then the north-south corridor is 172nd Avenue Northeast. At the intersection of Northeast, 124th and 172nd, the road does narrow, and for about, I believe about 14 or 15 years, there's been a gate that's been in place that impedes traffic mobility through this corridor to the north. It does have access. It can be opened by the fire department remotely, but vehicle access has been prohibited through that area, but individuals walking or biking can still gain access around that gate. So, how do we get to this point? A key component of the city's transportation management plan has always dealt with about making connections within Redmond. This connection and extension of 172nd Avenue Northeast out of Redmond into unincorporated King County was first identified in the North Redmond Neighborhood Plan back in 1995, and this action was codified in the adoption of the City Comprehensive Plan back at that time. In the 2005 Transportation Management Plan, this project to extend this road, because there was a period of time where, Paul, I believe it was from 116th, or was it 120th, that hadn't been built out in front of Clara Barton?
122nd.
122nd.
The road actually turned.
Turned.
Yeah, so it's northeast 122nd, 172nd, if you traveled north from 116th, actually turned west at 122nd.
Okay. So, it hadn't been fully pushed through at that time. So, in the Transportation Management Plan in 2005, this extension from 122nd up to 124th was identified to carry on up to 128th. Should note, at that time, we, the city of Redmond, already owned the public right-of-way from that 122nd to 124th, and this project was called out. The city issued a determination of non-significance... The city issued a determination of non-significance that was appealed at the time in early 2006 to the hearing examiner by two residents who lived north of 124th, and at the time, it was determined that that appeal did not have merit. And what essentially the appeal was stating was trying to prevent that extension from 122nd up to 124th and opening that corridor. So the city proceeded with a corridor study at the time, and it had four main goals that I've outlined here. And what it was talking about was how to build out that corridor, knowing that, for example, Clara Barton Elementary would be eventually coming into that area, additional growth with expanded housing up in that area, and, and knowing that we needed to accommodate and account for an increase of traffic in and around that area. But what actions could the city take in that corridor to help soften the blow of additional housing in and around that area, and then also with the elementary school coming into place? During that time, back in 2006, a series of stakeholder interviews happened, two open houses were held to collect community feedback, and a preferred alternative was identified. The preferred alternative, and here, and just said, I'll key this up, and then I'll turn it over to Gina to talk about actually all the different things that have been accomplished in and around the area. A preferred alternative was identified, and essentially from 2008 to date, what this map shows is all the various traffic calming efforts, actions, and activities that have happened in this small area. So Gina, I'll turn it over to you if you want to talk about some of the projects, the big components that have been put into place to date.
Supposed to be red. Okay, this one. Hello. So yes, you can see here, this was what was determined and offered as choices, opinions from the public and what they wanted to see, and also what was determined to be needed to, you know, for the corridor. So the corridor actually goes actually from 166th to 111th, and then to 172nd. And you can see there, there was over 10-plus speed cushions added, there were traffic circles, the roundabout, and bicycle lanes, sidewalk, curb extensions, all sorts of stuff. So everything has been done up until the gate, basically. And so right now, we're at the point where, you know, the next step would be to open the gate. And if you weren't aware, on the other side of the gate is Northeast 124th Street, that is a City of Redmond street. So, yeah.
So the, the one component, and this is, this is one thing that we haven't been able to find documentation on, is, and that sparked some of the public comments that were received last week. In 2008, we believe, roughly in 2008, maybe 2007 or 2009, residents north of Northeast 124th in unincorporated King County did come to the city and lobby the city council to place a barrier at that location to prevent traffic from moving north through the corridor up 172nd to 128th. The city council at that time, and this is where we don't know where this documentation came from, or direction, to public works staff to put in a barrier, but at the time, it was done, and we've been at this point since then. The remaining component that's left to be done to complete this corridor is that Segment D that's on the map, and that is the, basically the traffic calming measures at the intersection of 172nd and 124th, and then further traffic calming measures up through 124th to 128th. Now, the additional traffic calming measures that would need to be in place between 124th and 128th would be done in conjunction with King County. And that's something that we've been in contact with them, discussing what those options are and what that would look like. We've done some preliminary design as it relates to kind of how that corridor could continue to be built out to meet the intent for traffic calming within that final section. Part of the money that the council approved during the budget in, at the end of 2022, accounts for us engaging in and entering into, and enter local agreement with King County to help fund some of those further traffic calming measures up through the remaining portion of the segment. So our current status that we're looking at right now is, you know, with our scope on this, and the scope of the project that was adopted in the budget is the continuation and the creation of connections in North Redmond for North Redmond residents, and also on the converse side, residents in northern King County coming down into Redmond. And it's the, the final completion of the corridor. So what we're looking at here are a couple aspects that, at the baseline intersection of the road where we have the gate right now with the removal of the gate, it would be the installation of initial traffic calming measures, and we have a schematic of that here that we'll show in just a second. It is the installation of a, a small roundabout, some other barriers, speed signs, and lighting. Our intent on this is twofold. We took a look at this as an aspect of knowing we needed to phase the opening of this gate. And part of it is, and Patty and Gina will talk about this in just a minute, when we did some initial traffic, or I should say updated traffic modeling, is that we understand that there will be a impacted traffic in the corridor. We have our traffic modeling of what we would assume that to be, but until we can take and gain data and understand really what this would be to open up this gate, we can't fully commit to making all the further improvements with King County on Segment D until we come to an agreement of really what are those traffic volumes going to be in the future, and then what would be that impact into the community. So a big portion of this, of opening up the gate, putting in some initial traffic calming measures, is to begin that aspect of collecting data and understanding kind of really what types of traffic volumes we're going to be facing in the future. And then from that, it's the commitment that, making adjustments as needed. If it's a situation where the corridor is extremely overwhelmed, that it's not meeting the, the safety standards and conditions that we'd originally thought as this project was approved, I would say, yeah, the city being responsible stewards, been in and around the traffic system, that we would look maybe to close it down or make additional adjustments. We're not blind to those issues or tone deaf to the needs of the community, but part of this is, we have to make those efforts, create those connections, set the conditions, and then begin to gather data until we can finalize the final plan on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul or Patty to talk about the initial traffic mitigation that we're looking to do here at 124th and 172nd.
Thank you, Erin. So what we're looking at here is the intersection of Northeast 124th Street and 172nd Avenue. If you look on the aerial picture there, that diagonal line on the south side of the intersection, that's where the gate lies. There are some challenges to this intersection. It's, it's not a fully built-out intersection. To the west there, to the left, is Northeast 124th Street, which is inside Redmond, so we own that roadway. To the east, where you kind of see a little angled gravel road, that is unimproved right-of-way that the city owns. That gravel road eventually goes to a detention pond that the city maintains. What we're seeing here is a traffic circle, and it is a traffic calming element. We looked at other traffic control at this intersection, we looked at, well, how about two-way stop control in this section? How about all-way stop control intersection? The challenges we have there is compliance. We don't believe that we would have the adequate compliance there. It's, it's a straight section, and unless we, you know, really signed it and did a lot of ugly mitigations there, I don't, I don't think we're going to have the compliance, and that would be a safety risk. Whereas a traffic circle is a physical barrier that a driver has to accommodate, so they will slow down, have to change their directions of travel, move right and then move back left, and then that would be there all the time. So that, that would help to slow the traffic down through that area. We took a look at how larger vehicles can maneuver through the area, such as fire trucks, garbage trucks, some delivery vehicles, and so this traffic circle is mountable for large vehicles, so they can drive over it. We in passenger cars probably wouldn't want to do that. So it is allowing for larger vehicles to access this area. And this, this, this type of traffic control is going to be more and more popular in neighborhoods. If, if you look around our neighborhoods, some of the neighborhoods have very large intersections, we don't, we don't have striping on them, we don't have a center line, but they do have fairly large radius, and, and so a traffic circle kind of helps eat, eat up extra space and make the vehicles have to kind of pay attention a little bit more, slow down a little bit as they go through this. So this would be a, a location that we're, we're trying to learn from some of the other traffic circles that we feel aren't quite as effective as we'd like them to be. So we, you, you'll see that there's a circle in the middle, but then there's also guidance on the outside, and that's just to kind of help keep the vehicles in, in the path that we want them to go. Again, keep, keep the speeds low in the area, so pedestrians, other vehicles, they, they have time to be able to accommodate each other.
Thanks, Paul.
Councilmember Fields had a question?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if I could under, with all the detail that you're providing, where are all these cars coming from? These potential rush through the gate? Where, where's that traffic coming from? Is that off of Avondale? Is that off of Wooden Redmond, Woodinville Road? Why are we doing this, I guess, is the first question? And it, that helps me understand some of the traffic mitigation and some of the other things. And I'm not clear on, are they just sitting in outer space waiting to go through that gate, or?
Sure, I'd be happy to respond to that question. So the, the additional traffic that will come through that location is, is going to be Redmond residents that want to access Redwood Road, or they want to access Avondale Road. Right now, residents in that North Redmond area have to go to 116th and have to go either to Avondale or to Redwood Road. Residents north of 116th, they have to choose whether they go back south first and then east and west, or they go to 122nd and 162nd. So 162nd eventually makes its way to Northeast 124th Street. It's a two-way stop-controlled intersection. So it's, it's the circulation there. We don't believe that there's going to be a high number of regional traffic, cut-through traffic, commuting, cut-through traffic. Because of all the traffic calming mitigation that we've already installed all along that corridor, it is not a very favorable route.
16, was it 16 speed humps or cushions in that corridor and two to three traffic circles? Is that what we're looking at in that, in that whole corridor?
Yeah, there's about 10. 10 speed humps and several medians, and one traffic circle, raised crosswalks. Pretty much, if you, if you drive that route, you're driving slow. So it's definitely not a, a route you want to cut through.
So this is people who live in the area getting in and out?
Correct. That's what we're anticipating. But this other aspect of that, Councilmember Fields, is for us to be able to do some further modeling and collecting of that data to determine where are the people coming from. Because some of the other aspect that we've heard on the positive comments side of the House of, as Paul mentioned, people trying to exit northern Redmond, and how they have to get out, the backtracking and other aspect, and they're looking forward to this potential exit. Yep. So up here, we, we have done some traffic modeling on this and some updated information, and councilmembers, I did mail out the PowerPoint presentation to all of you as well. Patty or Gina, you want to talk about the actions that we undertook to do the traffic modeling and some of the comparisons here?
Right now, they're doing the north-south corridor, and so these are recent numbers that we just received. The entire report isn't done yet, but they were able to give us these numbers, and they do have more details, if you're interested, that show where they expect vehicles to come from, and I think there's only a couple from Avondale or from Redwood Road that would, people would detour from there to come this way. So like Paul mentioned, most of it will be internal. So these numbers show, right now, on, on this chart, you can see the peak AM and peak PM current numbers. So we wanted to get those, those were just measured in March, so we have somebody to compare it to. And as you can see, the next 20, 30 projected volumes will go up to 3775, 3,775, and that would be without traffic calming, if we didn't put any more measures in. And then putting the corridor improvements in on King County's side would reduce it by around 500 vehicles a day.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, ADT is for cars, right?
Yes.
It's not also including pedestrian and bicycle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One caveat or other point I do want to call out on that, and let me go back to the map, just so folks are aware. Fortunately, I don't think you can see my cursor on here. If you look at the map there, the road that runs in front of Clara Barton is 122nd. It runs east to west, and then eventually comes down and connects, sorry, I normally have a laser pointer, connects down to Northeast 124th. At that location there, it is in our CIP for, is it 25, 26?
26.
Yeah, to install a traffic light at that location. And one of the things that we're anticipating is that once that traffic light gets installed as an additional outlet for controlled access out of North Redmond, that the traffic volumes on the 172nd corridor will continue, will drop even more so, because that is a better outlet for many of the homes and neighborhoods that front that 122nd and the other aspects of North Redmond there. So with that, where are we at right now? So, you know, obviously, there's been a vocal response by the community, especially north of 124th in unincorporated King County. We're going to continue to solicit input. My contact information is on the project website that we have up, and we've gotten quite a bit of email in, both positive and negative as well, from people living all around the North Redmond area. We're working to summarize kind of the, the main comments out of that email. We've scheduled a community meeting here at Redmond City Hall. We'll have a additional notification that will be mailed out to a larger footprint. Let's see, I just sent that to Communications today, so hopefully that will go out early next week. That'll be on July 19th. We're going to do that in conjunction. We're going to do that in conjunction with King County Local Services Director and also the Roads Division Manager with King County. So that's going to be a joint meeting. And then we're going to finalize the project components based on the feedback that we've taken in from the community and then also align that with the goals of the original project dating back to 1995 and what we have in the CIP. And then this is ultimately a public works determination based on an operational issue for traffic. And once we've solicited the input and come up with the final plan, then we'll make that final determination on whether or not we're going to go forward with the project. So that takes it to the end of our formal presentation, but happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Stewart?
I have not yet received the presentation. Has anyone been able to receive it?
Not yet. Councilmember Anderson?
Ms. Stewart probably had a question as well.
I'm sure I'll have lots of questions when I have a chance to look at it one more.
Okay, I have a couple clarifying questions. And thank you for the presentation. Just to confirm, one of the first things I heard you say was that emergency access is remote, and I just wanted to make sure that's for both police and fire for the gate.
So it's my understanding, I'll check with Chief Lowe over there. Chief Shepard, the Fire Station 17 and I believe the other fire apparatus have a remote to access the gate. I don't know if the police do or not. They do not.
Thank you. And then what percentage of the anticipated ADT, which is, I just pulled one of the numbers, it was over 3,700 cars. What percentage of that are we expecting to be delivery traffic? Any ideas?
We'll have to see if we have that information when we get it back.
It doesn't sound like we have commuters really expecting to cut through there, and I'm just kind of wondering where all that volume would come from. Is there expected high development in that area or is it just because that will be available? It's a significant change from '26, or it's almost 10 times more.
So I think one of the challenges for the traffic engineering industry is having to adjust to kind of what happened to us in the last three years. There's been a lot of shifts in traffic patterns, schedules, kind of what we historically know as peak hours and such have evolved. And so I believe that the information that we receive from the consultant is their best estimate, and that's really all we have to go on. And kind of going back to what Director Burt was trying to describe is that we have a best estimate, but we really don't know until we collect real data from an open corridor.
Okay, I guess I was just curious if there's a big development going in that's going to put in 4,000 people or 4,000 cars or something like that. It seems like it's really, really high. And overall, my concern would be the council has adopted a climate emergency declaration that stated we are concerned about adding connections for non-motorized modes as a priority. And that, my understanding is that we've, with the projects that have been completed already, we've provided for those connections. Can you confirm that? There's bike and pedestrian access in those neighborhoods at this moment, with the exception of north of 124th, I think, right?
Yeah, so the corridor improvements have all included bicycle facilities, sidewalks, meandering sidewalks, trails. So those were all included.
Complete streets. Yeah, great, thank you.
Can I add one thing? If you look at the traffic volumes just on our side of the gate and the neighborhoods around there, they're around 3,000 already. So in there, so it would just be, you know, the inner neighborhood, those vehicles would be using the street is the big number of that.
I saw 395, not 3,000. So I'm not sure if I was reading that correctly or not on the graphic. Is that what you meant? So there's already 3,000 cars per day?
On our side of the gate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fields and then Councilmember Kurtser.
So two questions and then a comment. And I think you were answering one of my questions, as I'm still a little bit confused also about the volume. When we heard public testimony, we were, I forgot, was it every seven seconds or something? And that was, that's alarming. And then, and I think that might have been in a 24-hour day, so probably every three seconds if you assume people go to sleep. So I would like some, you know, to Councilmember Anderson's point, I would like to understand what you expect to see by opening the gate and you're stopping, there will be people not driving around the long way to get out of the neighborhood? Is that what we're saying? There's a shorter, this is a shorter path, right? So that should take some pressure off the other?
Yes, and there's currently on 162nd, as you know, there's no signal, right? But there is a signal at the end of the corridor, which is a lot safer access for people. But if you look, do you want to pull up this slide again? I put some example volumes on there for neighboring streets. So you could see kind of 3,000 or 4,000 sounds like a lot, and it is, but if you can relate it to streets that you're familiar with, you'll realize it's not as bad as it sounds, if that makes sense.
So I'm going to go ahead and make my comment. And, you know, one of the things, I'm good at one thing in life, and I listen, and I listen really well. And when I listened to public testimony, what struck me was, and sometimes they said it and sometimes they implied it, that they don't trust the city government to keep their children and themselves and their pets safe. That's really what we heard. If you listen closely, that is what they're saying. It's not just about opening a gate. It's about they don't trust us to keep them safe. And in all candor, I don't trust the government to keep me safe either. I've mentioned that many, many times from this dais. I try to ride my bike. I try to ride my motorcycle. I see people speeding in and out. I hear people racing around. So I think the, I think when this public meeting that you plan, I really think that you need to focus on solutions that address that lack of trust. Also, the lack of trust that they feel this was sprung on them without having an opportunity to provide input. So you're doing that, which is a good thing. But I would, and I know I'm being rhetorical and I'm pontificating, but I think this issue of trust is really important. So I hope that we address that.
Absolutely, Councilmember Fields, and I appreciate you making those comments. I will say that I don't feel that it was a situation where we were springing anything on anyone. I think in our, as we kind of have done a little bit of reflection on how this unfolded, the Public Works Department, we understand we could have done better on this. But it was a situation where we were beginning to collect initial information and developing a plan, and I had staff out on site. And they got approached and asked, hey, what are you doing out here? And rightfully so, my staff were honest and said, hey, look, we're considering removing this barrier or we're going to. I don't know what the exact words were. And that spread because it was a change in and around that community. It was a change of use or a change of focus from the city's standpoint because it hadn't been touched or really, I would say, effectively looked at in 15-plus years. And that surprised people and it caught them off guard, and the community response got ahead of our messaging on that.
Got it. No, and I appreciate that. And again, in all candor, a lot of the dates where there was discussion preceded even Councilmember Carson's time on.
I don't believe it.
That was a long, long time ago. I mean, he's been here 100 years, so.
Council President Kurtser.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Fields, for those thoughts. I would have to say, I really agree in terms of what resonated with me from hearing from members of our public is about the need to rebuild trust and the need to communicate really well with them and to engage them in this process rather than saying, hey, we're coming in and doing this to your neighborhood after 17 years. That even if we had a great communications plan, if it didn't actually get communicated to the public, then the communication didn't happen. And so being able to now take a step and have a community meeting, and what I'm hearing from you is that you are planning to be able to take ideas into account and really be open to altering the timelines and the plans based on what we hear from our community. I think that's something that can really help to rebuild the trust, is to be able to listen to where are the intersections that folks are most concerned about? What are they seeing? What would make them feel more comfortable if the gate were to be opened? Or what are the different experiences that they're having with the gate closed? And being able to really evaluate that. And I think being able to share some of this information, I think, to the point of what some of my fellow councilmembers were asking about, I think that we still, for our community as well as for our council, I would love to be able to have a little bit more information about the projected benefits, which is what I think some of my fellow councilmembers are getting at. Because clearly, there's a cost to some people who live in this community, but what do we see in terms of the cost versus benefit? Because, and being able to communicate that out with community members and then gather from everyone who lives in that area their feedback on what they would choose. As you mentioned, there are some people who have said that they would love to see that gate opened, and then others who would like to see it closed. And I think we need to take a little more time to do that. Clearly, we did gather feedback on this in 2006 and engaged the community, but that was 17 years ago. And if we knew that back in 2006, 2008, when they put in the barrier, this was a hot button topic. I think just as like a learning for our city, it's useful for us to think, when we come back to something like this, let's be super proactive in terms of engaging the people in the neighborhood before jumping into it. I understand it maybe got a little bit ahead of you.
Sure.
But I think now that it's happened, let's make sure that we do right by our community before any more decisions are made. And to that point, I guess, in terms of the process, one question that I have, well, actually, two questions that I have. One is just in terms of the timeline. I would love to understand a little bit better why, when we have budgeted starting in 2024 to do the work on around this project, as the materials indicate in 2025, why we have the rush to open the gate? I understand you want to do the modeling, but I'm curious whether you can just speak a little bit more to that, since I think that sounds like that's a big concern for the community is having that infrastructure in place. And we have budgeted for it, but not until next year.
So often, what I do when I take a look at work plans and projects that we have aligned, we take a look at opportunities and options either to accelerate work based on capacity that we have, opportunities with internal staffing or maybe a delay in another project, and we end up accelerating something. This was an opportunity for us to take a look, and our initial view on this was looking at it from the standpoint of can we undertake this type of small-scale mitigation work in-house versus the use of external consultants and contractors? So it was a somewhat, I would say, internal challenge of saying, hey, we have this project that we know is coming in 2024. We wanted to do a proof of concept on small-scale concrete work and traffic calming measures. Of course, when I talked to Paul, he said it's going to be four or $5 million. I'm kidding, it's never that much. But it was a challenge for us in-house to take a look at can we begin to do more of this small-scale neighborhood response work in-house versus three to four times the cost of having somebody come in outside? So it was an aspect of an operational challenge that I put to my staff, not only in traffic operations and safety engineering, but also to my streets team, to say, hey, look, here's a problem set. We've had it for 15 years. How would we tackle this? What would it look like? What would be the costs involved for us to do it in-house versus externally? And that's how we got down on this road here in 2023.
Great, thank you very much for that information and for your efforts in general to be able to take city public works projects and get them moving, I think, and to be able to do them in a more cost-efficient way. I really appreciate that. I think in this case, you know, in some cases where everyone wants to see the project done, great, you know? In this case, maybe we take a breath here, slow it down, since we weren't even planning to do it until next year so that we can do the community engagement piece first and make sure that we have some of the infrastructure done before the gate-opening piece would be my preference. But I would say, one piece I did want to ask in terms of process is you mentioned that ultimately, public works will make the decision, but a request that I would make is that once the information is gathered and before any decision is made, is that you bring it back to our council so that we can have a discussion as city leadership to, just via respect, to be able to have that discussion with you about what we've heard, what decisions we're going to make, and also so that the public can be able to watch and be engaged throughout the entire process while recognizing that it's in your jurisdiction perhaps to make that particular decision. I think in terms of leadership, it would be great for us as city leadership to all take this on together and discuss it as we go through the process.
I'll definitely talk to the mayor about that once we get to that point, and we'll keep everybody informed on that. You know, the one point, additional point I do want to make, and I do believe that community process and input is important, but community process and input can also choke progress and choke the implementation of projects in a timely manner. I definitely hear your point, Councilmember, about the need on this one to engage the larger audience. We will. But I will also say that if you look at our CIP program and all the projects we have on this program, we do not engage in a high level of community engagement every time we come into a neighborhood to replace a sidewalk, to put in a protected bike path. We're just not structured that way to do that level of engagement. I'm just letting you know that this is outside the norm for us in certain cases.
I appreciate that. I'll just say one more comment and then I'll let others speak, but I appreciate that. I will say that when we replace a sidewalk or we add a bike lane, it's different than when we change the way that people get around in a neighborhood. And in particular, I think Councilmember Anderson mentioned our climate declaration, climate emergency declaration, but we also are a Vision Zero city. And so we're focused right now on actually making it more bike and pedestrian friendly. And what I heard from the public was that right now, this is a really great bike and pedestrian corridor that's super, that feels safe to the people who live there. So, you know, we have to think about that, and I think when we hear from our public that a project is very impactful to them, then we respond. But a lot of our projects, they're just happy to see new infrastructure, so we don't necessarily need that. But I do think that we should have that process. And I would say on our process, I would ask that we have this work together. Certainly, the council can look at what our potential powers are in this regard, but I would rather for us to be able to do it in a collaborative way rather than for it to be any sort of a adversarial issue. So that's my suggestion on that process.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I wasn't on council when this, because I think I would have remembered this. I was racking my brain, like, no, no, definitely not. We did not cite any prisons nor deal with the gate situation. I was, it actually is funny because I was up, I live in the south part of the city, as most of you on council know, but for the audience... as most of you on council know, but for the audience, I don't get up to that part of Redmond much, but I had the occasion to need to visit someone up there. And I actually came upon this gate, and I'm like, I need to go like right there, and I can't get right there. And I was like, I didn't know I was there, and, you know, I probably should have, but I had no sense of why it was installed, what it's there to do. I think probably there are residents that are like, I don't know why it's there either. I don't know why it keeps me from going down the street to where my friends are. I think if we have the right devices to mitigate the speed impacts that, you know, I mean, we have problems in my neighborhood for people speeding, and they're my neighbors sometimes, which is like, really, guys, you know, you're going to hurt someone if you're not careful. And so I totally empathize with the concerns and that we do something, that we do the right thing to make sure that those concerns are not just listened to, but internalized and do what we can to make sure that those are addressed. Sometimes, not all concerns are going to be able to be addressed, but I think we need to do our level best to make sure that we absolutely look at the legitimate concerns of those in the neighborhood. And, I mean, we have heard from many of it say that they would like to see the gate open. And, you know, when I rolled up to this, I was like, I just need to go right there, and couldn't, and I just didn't. I was kind of in awe that I didn't, I didn't know why it was there, what it's there to do. And so maybe that's, I would imagine there are some in the neighborhood that feel the same way, that like, I don't know why it's there either. I moved in here 10 years ago, but it's always been there. And I get that, you know, change is difficult, and I'm probably the worst at dealing with change. So anyway, but I think we can do our best to make sure it remains a safe community. So thanks. Thanks for really taking this on board.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields, and then Councilmember Anderson.
I really want to reiterate what Councilmember Kurtser was saying. I've often said that, you know, the role of government is to negotiate how we all live together. And an example is, I would love to see, personally, I'd like to see the gate stay closed, because it's a pathway for me to get to Woodinville and go to Mongolian Grill. I can go that way and then get on a bike path. I'm kidding, sort of. My point is that everybody has perspective, everybody has an interest, and we have to really have these conversations. And when Councilmember Kurtser didn't quite say it, I'm going to go ahead and say it. I did ask the question, what is council's authority in this case? What can council do? And we did get a response from the city attorney. And primarily, that authority is delegated from council. So I think we need to really think about when, you know, when that authority does, that we've delegated, does need the collaborative discussions and the approach, and when it's just a routine change to a neighborhood or to a street or to whatever. So I would say let's tread very carefully here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I have a few other questions. I'm not sure if you can take rapid fire, if this is a follow-up question here, just a yes or no. Are there other gates like this in the city?
No.
Okay, cool. And then in addition to my request for information about the delivery traffic, is there also school traffic, school-related traffic in this area?
I can answer that. The Clara Barton School pulls from that area of the county as well as the city, and the school district is very excited that this gate would be open because it provides better access for families, whether they choose to ride bike or go in a car. So they're happy that this will be happening.
Okay. And then is the gate itself something that can be operated by anybody, or is it locked?
It's locked.
Okay. And then is there some sort of gate timing plan that can be community-led in order to keep the gate in place?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you say that question one more time?
Sure. Is there, have we thought about a timing plan or something that can be community-led where somebody in the neighborhood opens the gate at a certain time? Or?
No. No.
No. That would be opening and closing a road, and we wouldn't.
If there was a plan that we could adopt or something, that would seem to be compliant with the road or opening or closing?
So it's difficult for me to answer that question, because, one, without physical improvements to the intersection, there's no way to open that gate, because you can't safely operate that.
Right.
So if it was just a, hey, we're going to open this gate on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we couldn't do that with all the mitigations and building out a little, we have to do some improvements to the intersection. So if you wanted to do improvements to the intersection and then say that this road is open only on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, you could probably do something like that. But you can't, you can't open it at all to the general public without these physical improvements.
Right. I support those improvements. I love traffic circles personally, so I'm excited to see those. But thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie.
I did have a clarification. There are a few gates in the city that are on in neighborhoods. There's one in particular, just up the road off of Redmond-Woodinville Road that's part of a neighborhood that is supposed to remain unlocked, and we struggle to make sure the property owners keep it unlocked because it's supposed to have access. So, and then I think that, I think that we only have one gated community in the city. But outside of that, I don't, I think we have a condo down by, like, West Lake Smamish that, and it doesn't have a gate, but it's supposed to, it's a private road, but not on public property.
Correct.
So that's, this is the only one where that exists. And generally speaking, long ago, the city decided that we were a more open community and didn't want to be a gated, have gated communities in our city.
So I think the thing about the gates that are on private property, I have the same question about public safety access, which would be, are those also electronically operable by fire, or are they, we don't have any requirements for those kinds of gates? I know that's kind of out of scope for this conversation, but.
Yeah, I think there's something like that. I will also mention that because this is the boundary of the city of Redmond and King County, on the other side of the gate is Sheriff's Department versus the city of Redmond, even though we'll respond to 911 calls also.
Okay.
But we don't, right now, we don't have access there. The other thing I'll mention about that neighborhood, because that traffic goes behind my house, I feel the impacts of all this, too, is that there is another way to get down to 124th, and it is actually an extremely challenging and dangerous road. This is a much safer route.
All right. I think I finally get to jump in. Oh, Councilmember Stewart. Go ahead.
Thought it was the last one, so just, I'm not going to say much, because I actually think that Councilmember Kurtser covered it. And we both have a job to do, both the council and the staff. And I very much understand that this is a project that's been in the works for a long time, and every direction that's been given is to move forward. And Director Burt, I believe that we both have a job to do respectfully. I'm not particularly convinced of the purpose of this project. I think Councilmember Fields alluded to that a little bit. But a higher level reflection on that is actually earlier tonight in our study session, we had a joint session with the Planning Commission talking about the future of our city. And this connectedness from 1995, I'm just curious at this point if that was felt like it was needed, because that was the frontier of realizing that cul-de-sacs weren't going to work for us anymore. Those seem somewhat related to me. I'm mostly curious about that. I went out and visited the gate last night in this area, and what I, in addition to the gate, I did notice that there is infrastructure in place for a road that's not open. So I did see some of the pieces that have already been put into place. And I did see, compared to the urban center that I call home, beautiful sidewalks that are separated from the street, from a narrow street, separated by grass and trees and other things. So all to say, this is a really difficult position we're in. I hope that we get to hear the next report back, and I hope that the, that the community does have a chance to be heard and provide input on a project that has had a lot of input and a lot of, a lot of consternation in the past. And it's difficult in a vertical team like the council for us to track that. And so I just, I just hope the city will hold the meeting, because it wants to hold the meeting and is open to the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will bring us to a close on this topic. I really appreciate the briefing on this. Thank you all for the work and the information and the data. Just have a chicken and an egg question. Is the roundabout currently set to go into place before the gate opens or after the gate opens, and then you collect the data? I kind of heard a little bit of both.
So in order to open the gate, we have to put in the roundabout and make the additional improvements to the infrastructure. And then we could take it out, and then that's when we would begin the data collection.
So there'll be a temporary roundabout? Is that what I just heard? Take out, so take out the gate?
But we're not, I mean, essentially, how we've talked about it, is that traffic would not flow through that area until the infrastructure, to include the roundabout, the lighting, the signage, the striping on the ground, is in place. Then that final measure is removed, which would then allow traffic to move through the area.
I'm sorry, I'm clearly still missing something. So you're going to remove the gate without the roundabout being in place?
No. We have to build the infrastructure, correct. We have to build the infrastructure first.
Thank you.
And the last component would be removal of the gate.
Thank you. Got that. Okay. That's what I thought was the plan.
Can I add something there?
Please.
Just to clarify, the gate is in the way of where.
Construction.
Yes, construction. So the gate will be removed and a different barrier will be put up.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's the part I was missing.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And then, and then construction, and, you know, the barrier will stay until deemed ready to go.
Thank you. Much more clear. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the efforts to bring some of these projects in-house. I know you have that new curb concrete laying machine that would put that roundabout in there nice, and I'm assuming nice and easily. So these, are these going to be armadillos on the ground here, or are they those bendable flex poles to keep the traffic pattern in line?
It'll be flex posts.
Flex posts?
Yes.
And is that, is that safer than an armadillo, or is that?
I'm actually not sure what the armadillo is. Are you talking about the raised curve?
RPMs, large RPMs.
Oh, okay. Safer? Well, it definitely gives a narrower feeling, which is what you want, because that makes people feel like they need to slow down.
Okay.
And then if they hit those, it doesn't typically cause any damage to, you know, their vehicle. Maybe we might have to replace the delineator, but no.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
The flexible posts are more visible, too, and that's really key.
Got it. And then at the end of 172nd, all the way up to 128th, there's a, did I hear you say there's a light up there? Because I visited this location the Wednesday after we had all the public comment, but I clearly couldn't get up to that intersection. So there's currently a light on the King County side.
Yes, up at 128th. And, you know, a portion of this, going back to Councilmember Fields' comment about helping the community feel safe, we have to work in partnership with King County on this as well. And that's our commitment on this, and not only on this project, but also many of these cross-boundary issues that we have. So it's in the forefront of what we're looking at.
Okay. I was just thinking about the safety element of leaving that neighborhood during the snow events and how much safer that would be than navigating that steep hill.
Correct.
So I appreciated hearing that as well. And I really appreciated the traffic comparison data. I was kind of surprised to see my neighborhood's traffic data, and I never would have guessed it was that high. So appreciate the depth of information that you brought forward, the depth of the conversation, and just really, you know, keeping the conversation moving, having the community meeting in a couple of weeks. Just appreciation for hearing the feedback and having the conversation.
Absolutely.
Right. Anyone else? Councilmember Fields, last comment?
Yeah. I did want to respond real quickly to, I do not think that safety on our streets is solely the responsibility of the Public Works Department. I want you to know that you're part of it. Law enforcement is part of that as well. Creating a culture of safety and whatever we can do as a city to provide leadership to our community, to say, you know what, when you drive carelessly or recklessly, you are putting other people's lives at stake. That's a responsibility that we in government have. So I'm not putting it all on you. You just have a part of it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Briefly.
One quick request. You sent out this PowerPoint tonight to the council, but it wasn't posted with materials. So if that could get posted with tonight's items, so that way the public can go back and refer to it, I think there was a lot of information in this PowerPoint that would be helpful for folks to look at in advance at the public meeting.
Yeah, I sent it to mayor council, so I will make sure that it gets posted.
Great, thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you all being here tonight and.
You bet.
Talking with us for an hour about this, so very much appreciated.
Happy to do so. Thanks.
All right. And with that, we will move on to our last item on the agenda, and that is council talk time. And we have our first council policy proposal from Councilmember Stewart with a Hopper item. We'll give about 10 minutes to this item. And Councilmember Stewart, would you like to introduce the item and give us a brief description?
Sure. Thank you. Have a good night. So, thanks so much. This is our first time doing this, so I look forward to everybody's feedback. Okay, cool. So as we've discussed at the last couple of council retreats, we, I have been interested in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, particularly related to single-use waste generated by food service items. There are, in your packet, you have a copy of the Hopper form, as well as the model ordinance from Bellingham, and some additional information about a grant opportunity that is currently available to Redmond businesses. So because this rated so highly, and I heard from the last study session that there was interest in this, we went ahead and put a test in here of our Hopper. What's really interesting is that this policy to address single-use waste in food service ware, so what does the policy do? The policy moves businesses in Redmond who serve food to durables for dine-in residents and commercial compostable for takeout residents, or takeout customers, excuse me. So this policy is actually called for in our environmental strategic, under ESAP. So the policy compels the city to increase diversion from community waste while reducing contamination with other waste streams and require compostable and paper disposables in restaurants and stores. So it labeled it as a bit of a further-out item. There is a unique moment for the city of Redmond at the moment, because there are other cities who have already done some work on these ordinances and had some learnings. For instance, there is another city that requires not just commercially compostable items, but home compostable items. And if you know anything about these kinds of items, a compostable cup, like the one Mr. Carson is holding, that is for commercial versus one that must be able to biodegrade in your backyard compost pile, is a completely different project and a completely different threshold. So that is not something I would recommend for the city of Redmond. Additionally, we just signed on to the RE-PLUS pledge with King County, and there is actually grant money available. The grant administrator is Zero Waste Washington, which, for the record, I am a former board member of the organization, not a current board member, and have not been in my duration on the council. But it has a grant, it is administering grants for the city of Redmond currently to help local businesses transition to durables. And this is a grant program that is going on regardless of whether or not we help with this policy. this policy. So that is $500 per business for the purchase of durable goods for the first time, such as dishes, condiment dispensers, cups, cutlery, and then up to $1,000 toward the purchase of a dishwasher because obviously for businesses that are doing more durables, um, that is a, a larger lift. I did hear, um, I just want to address really quickly in the study session last time, some interest in styrofoam, particularly as well as the bring your own container, um, rules. We actually already have those statewide in Washington. So I just wanted to address quickly that, um, as of June 1st, packing peanuts, um, are no longer available in the state of Washington. And in June 2024, coolers and styrofoam food service ware will no longer be allowed in the state of Washington. And the bring your own container, we took care of in 2019. There was a slight, um, you know, pause on that during the pandemic, but we do have the bring your own container laws already on the books here in Washington. Are there, I guess at this point, since we've never done this before, are there questions about what the policy is or isn't that I can help answer?
Sure. Any questions from councilmembers on the policy as it is in front of us? The, um, both. Councilmember Anderson?
So you mentioned some learnings, uh, that I'm assuming you have, but we don't. So what would be some of those takeaways from other cities, um, in terms of the success or failure of a program that we could include in this or did that get considered in your proposal?
Sure, absolutely. So I responded to the lowest level of the council threshold so far, which was the idea to study a policy like this. Um, so the example of the, um, not requiring just commercially compostable food service ware, but home backyard compostable food service ware, that's an example of a learning that I didn't, I didn't put that policy in your packet because I think we've learned so far that that's, um, not going to be something that most cities can take on. Um, there, I, there is a note in here that, um, section five of the ordinance from Bellingham was addressing, um, other types of single-use waste, including mini bottles in hotels, for instance, but we took care, um, that, the state legislature took care of that, um, in this past year with HB 1058. So we wouldn't need to take that on also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzer?
So just to be clear in terms of what your, your ask is, is your ask for us to be able to, um, refer this to staff, for them to study and then bring to us for study session? Or, uh, is to basically to go to the study moment or to develop a process, um, through which we can, um, address, or through which we could, we could develop our own, um, policy?
Sure. So here's my thoughts so far, and I hope this is highly conversational because we've not done this before. I would not want to move forward unless there was enough council interest to pursue, um, the next steps. And in my mind, two of the next steps would be, um, feedback from our local businesses as well as making sure we're helping, um, to provide awareness about the grant dollars that are available for businesses, no matter if we do this or not. Also, for those who are currently using styrofoam, maybe they want to transition to durables currently before, before they need to next year. So getting some feedback from the business community, I have spoken briefly, um, with Ms. Hudson at One Redmond and, um, about the need that if the council took this on, which I was very clear that we have not yet, um, that we would be interested in getting feedback from the business community and they're a willing partner in helping to convene that for, with us. And then I do definitely think that staff would need a chance to give us feedback on the model ordinance as well before one is drafted for the City of Redmond. So for instance, um, Director Burt and Micah in Public Works and of course Ms. Liebeck and some others probably have, probably saw this in the council packet tonight and had thoughts. And I, if we move forward, I would absolutely love to hear their thoughts.
I'm very interested in this and would support moving forward, uh, with having staff look at it. I think maybe to propose, it might be good to, to work with our staff to figure out what's the best way to engage the business community and, and appreciate that proactive work as well. Um, because I do think it'd be great if we could do this in a collaborative way. As Councilmember Stewart mentioned, if, a lot of businesses are going to be moving anyway from styrofoam to something else, rather than moving from styrofoam to plastic containers, if we have something like this potentially in place, perhaps it makes it just an easier transition, um, to be able to do some of that planning. But we definitely want to get the feedback from them to be able to do it. But I do think, um, as Councilmember Stewart mentioned, we ha, we already approved this in our ESAP as something we want to do. Um, and it does seem like, um, pulling this action forward a few years and to get this done sooner, um, just looking at the amount that goes into our landfills, um, goes into, uh, into waste, um, in our communities and, and doing our part to be able to reduce waste, I think, um, could be really exciting to be able to look at. And I think taking the time to study what other cities, um, have done and, and get our staff's look at how we would tailor that to Redmond would be exciting. So, um, would support a next step on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Nice job, by the way. Thank you for bringing the proposal. Um, the, uh, the question I had is what is the timeline related to the grants so that we can understand kind of if there's ways to break it down into smaller bits? And for example, are there, are we aware of businesses in Redmond that are pursuing that grant already that we can learn from, but mostly how much time do we have here when we?
Absolutely. My recommendation would be if council proceeded on this and we were, were getting feedback and, um, pers, if we chose to pursue this, would be to actually invite the grant administrator to the, to like a study session or something, or a committee meeting of the council to, um, help fill us in on some of those things. Because I, I can't answer on their behalf, like what their flexibility is, what their timelines and things like that. It's also a grant that's going to continue to exist regardless of whether or not we-
That's helpful.
Proceed. So it may just be information we're interested in anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think Ms. Liebeck could probably get that information fairly easily and get it to us if we pursue this. Councilmember Fields?
Um, maybe this is questions for the mayor. Is One Redmond in a position to help with some of this business, um, research, even if we were to amend their contract and provide some sort of city funding? They seem to be in the best position, uh, to actually gather the, the input from our business community. I'm not sure of that. It's just a thought.
Um, possibly. They have the business connections somewhat, our staff do too. I think the, the biggest thing, I think you, you mentioned funding. So One Redmond does not have the capacity to do this from a staffing perspective to add something else to their work plan at this moment. But I would also say if this is something council's interested in, then the way, um, the, probably the only way you could actually move forward is to decide you don't want to do something else in the ESAP that we are working on, that we have budgeted for and to make a change there. So that would be a decision that you would have to make because I have heard from my staff as well that they are full in, in their work plans. So that would be a consideration.
Great, thanks. So just, uh, one comment. Uh, the idea of a, an ordinance appeals to me, but obviously that's much more complex. And we really have to have our act together before we make an ordinance, um, where we impose rules on our business community. The reason I say that is because, um, from a fairness perspective for businesses, when some do and some don't, that always creates an imbalance. And you, you have a lot of drive, drive-throughs. And if they're exempt from some of these, uh, potential, uh, reduction in waste, that's, then, that's really an unfair burden on those places that don't do drive-up. So there's a lot, a complexity here. I think it's important and I applaud, uh, that you've taken or asked us to take this on. I appreciate that. But it's complex.
Thank you.
Can very much appreciate that. Drive-through is not an exception in, in the ordinance from Bellingham, so, um, just, just clarify on that, but understand your concerns.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, I will jump in. I'm excited about this. I like applaud you for getting this turned around so quickly and brought forward so quickly and so thoroughly. I'm very interested in, um, moving this forward personally. I'm interested if you, do you happen to know anything about the two, the two spots that I had questions on in the model ordinance are the personal care products and the prepackaged foods. Um, the personal care one seems like a much bigger lift for us as a city. So I'm not necessarily interested in us taking that on because that seems like kind of tied to some stuff that was happening at the state level that ended up not moving forward. So I don't know if you have any insights on that.
That personal care products, that's the mini bottles in section five-
Oh, that's the mini bottles.
That the state did take care of this year.
Okay. I was, okay. That's mini bottle, okay. I didn't see mini in there anywhere, so.
Yeah, sorry if that was unclear.
Yeah. Got it. So that would be stricken.
At lodging establishments.
Got it. Got it. Um, and then, yeah, so I, I do think there are a couple of things that I'd definitely want to study further. I am interested in moving this forward on our ESAP work plan because the grant funding available, um, I think that is a huge opportunity for, you know, the purchase of a dishwasher. That was one of the first things I thought of. What about some of these places that are small and they don't have the ability to have that much staff doing that turnover work of, of goods and service ware? Um, so, you know, knowing that there's funding available is exciting to me. Um, so I'm in support. If there is enough support around the room, I'd be interested in working with, um, Council Vice President and the mayor to figure out how we move this forward. I'm hearing a fair amount of support for moving this forward. Could we, could we do, unless Councilmember Carson, you had something you wanted to add?
Well, I've been kind of listening to what folks have been saying. Um, and I was just pondering the idea of, of the dishwasher situation. And I was just trying to think of, of a place where I go where they don't, they serve it on, they serve on, I, I guess there are a few paper, like paper boats and things like that, that, when you actually stay there. But for the most part, it's, they're already, you know, using, um, what, what's the term? They're using plates, you know, plates and silverware and things like that. So I, I was trying to think, think of just places around Redmond that were like that and couldn't think of a whole, a whole bunch of them. But, um, you know, as, as I have often talked about us leading by example by, by, you know, doing something like this for Derby Days, uh, with the, the vendors that come to Derby Days, um, you know, that's, obviously the state has done a bunch of things that have made those steps probably moot, but, um, simply because by, you know, like styrofoam going away next year, um, uh, com, you know, compostable requirements, those kinds of things. So, you know, all things that I wanted to see us kind of do, uh, leading by example with, with something like Derby Days, because I, I, it, it bugs me no end to, to watch people put things in the wrong bins, um, when you're at festivals. And it's just, it's like, just think about it before you do it and, um, but, you know, if they don't have the option to, to, to put anything in a recycling bin that's, well, or, uh, in the garbage that isn't, uh, compostable, then all of it's compostable. So you just, uh, you know, you kind of remove that problem. Obviously, with Derby Days, we have things that are, they're going to have plastic wrappers and so it's not as, it's not so easy. And I, so I'm really kind of on, on, on Mr. Fields', um, line of thinking when it comes to, like, we need to communicate this to businesses. They can't just be blindsided, uh, and, you know, have to do a, a massive fire drill to change how they do everything, you know, whether it's eat-in or take-out and, uh, I, it's, it's not fair to them and it's, you know, we have to be, as a city, more organized to, to deal with the, what's inevitably going to happen out of that is confusion. I, I mean, we have to have our communication down pat so that it is not unclear what they have to do, uh, and what their options are. Because at the end of the day, I think business owners want options. They, they, I can do this or I can do that. Well, you know, they're, they're going to look at what does the best for their customer and obviously how it affects their bottom line. So, so I, I agree completely that we have to really think this out before we just enact some, um, what may be well-meaning and, and perfectly logical piece of legislation, but short-sighted in that we didn't actually consult anybody that's actually affected by it. So, and I know that we wouldn't do that. I'm just saying we really need to be diligent about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to?
Yes, two things. First, I want to acknowledge this, the issue, um, with the staff because I absolutely do respect that. And in this process that we have laid out, it wasn't worth the time to get staff feedback before coming here, before we knew if there's some, so we're learning this together and I just ask for a little grace in that. Mr. Carson, I, I guess I would ask, um, if you trust us, your colleagues, who are lead, who may lead on a process like this, um, if we could set that model, if we could do something with community, um, and try. Earlier tonight, I was, I truly was so inspired around the cultural notes of, um, a bias toward yes, holding our foot open for our community. And we know waste issues are something the community cares a lot about. So it's just, it's a really simple question, like, do you trust us enough to try? If, if you do, I would love your support tonight, but if you don't, I get that too.
Well, I think you ought to say it best. Do or do not, there is no try.
Never seen a Star Wars movie. I'm on the record with that.
Whoa, on the record, never having seen a Star Wars movie. All right. Groundbreaking information tonight. Council Vice President Kritzer?
Oh, well, I was just going to say, I feel like the cool thing about our new Hopper process is that it's, it's designed to actually create that transparency that I think Mr. Carson is speaking to in the process of saying like, if there's something big we want to do, let's bring it up. Let's have this first conversation, decide, do we even want to entertain it further? Okay, now what's the next step? And what's the right way to approach this in a, a thoughtful process? What's the way that we would engage with the mayor and the staff to say how we think about that and how do we balance that with other priorities? And then, um, and then as each part of the process goes forward to make sure that, that we're thinking about it and we're not springing in on our community, but we're actually engaging them as part of that. So, um, I'm excited about this being our first, uh, Hopper item.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
And, and I appreciate this. I think it's really exciting. And in order for it to be successful, it will take a significant amount of work, staff time and other things. And so you will have to contemplate what are you not going to do? Because there will have to be a choice.
Yep.
Just, I just want to be very clear on that.
We hear you.
Okay. Well, I've, I've heard before, no, we can do this and the others. And I'm telling you that when I talked, when I talked to the staff, they, that will be the question is what are they willing to give up?
Councilmember Fields, did I see your hand?
No, I, and I, um, anticipated and, and that the mayor was going to say exactly that and, and I get that. And I think at this, we don't have time tonight, but I think, uh, when we do have, uh, a major change in potential policy and ordinance, uh, we have to, as Councilmember Kritzer mentioned earlier when we were talking about that gate, what are the benefits? And I, and we really have to understand clearly, uh, this is going to be a difficult process. This is going to be, um, something that not only, uh, City of Redmond staff, uh, will have to put in a lot of effort, but as Councilmember Carson pointed out, the businesses will have to make some major changes. I mean, just in our coffee shop, when the pandemic hit, all of a sudden we were not allowed to use, uh, ceramic cups. And that was a, a, a major cost to us. And now, uh, that particular coffee shop is in the habit of not using ceramic cups. So we'd have to go back and, which is a good thing, but I'm telling you, it's a lot of effort and it's a lot of, uh, just buying inventory or having, uh, policies in place that, that people don't take the cups and break them out in the parking lot or whatever. It's, it's complicated. It's much more complicated than, than we think if we don't, are not in that business. So, but saying all that, the benefits are, in my mind, substantial because we are literally choking our planet with garbage. So.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate the conversation. What I am hearing from our conversation is we will move this to the staff review portion, uh, figure out- figure out, you know, what, what are the things that we may need to shuffle to get this bumped up? And I agree, we absolutely have to bring our small business and business community along with us. Otherwise, you know, what, we're, we're just going to be implementing something that, that can't be met anyway. And just definitely, just want to reiterate, thank you for bringing this forward. I know this was on our ESAP, but I think the, the recognition was that we wanted to have this moved up in our timeline because even once we implement something like this, there is going to be a runway, there is going to be a lead time for when this gets implemented so that businesses can be brought along and have that time to transition. So, I think further study, further review is what I'm hearing from consensus from everyone. And we, council leadership will work with the mayor and the, and the team to figure out what that looks like and what that might, my timeline might look like. And we will update you all. Councilmember Stewart, did you have anything else you wanted to add to the conversation?
I have mostly questions about the process from here, actually, because that's
So do I.
And, and, yeah, so I, I have questions of like, my role as it's listed here, sponsor, right?
Yes.
So, I obviously have a certain amount of affinity and subject matter knowledge on, on the matter, so I would very much like to be involved.
Absolutely.
So, one of the questions I had coming in about a process like this is, is then, does, given that there are no other cosponsors, because I didn't do that part yet, is that like, can, can we, the three of us, work together on the, on the next? Does that make sense?
Yes, and I'm sorry that I didn't.
No, I, we're making it up as we go.
We are, we're building our wings on the way down. Yes, I'd be happy to be a cosponsor on this. I'm sure Councilmember Kritzler would as well. I don't want to speak for you, but, yeah. So, I think collaboratively, we can figure out how this proceeds, how this moves forward, how it gets to staff review and, yeah, work from there. Does that sound?
Yeah, and, and the staff review piece, I'm, I won't lie, it does make me nervous because I, I'm not sure that there could have been anything that could have come up tonight. We passed a very robust budget. And there's a lot of work and we are in the middle of a comp plan, so there's, there is a very full plate.
Yes.
And our council wanted this process so that we could do some amount of other work. So, I, I want to, I'm very like considerate of like, I hope that we, the council, can own as much as possible on things that we want to legislate.
Yep, yeah. I appreciate that.
Council Vice President Kritzler.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I think that maybe part of the next touch would be gathering the information of what we would need to reprioritize a little bit so we can bring it back to the council, just to get everyone's feedback on, are you okay with this one thing going slower so we have a little bit more staff time to work on this piece or that? And that can be something that we can work on to gather the information from the mayor and staff on that to, to share back with the council. But I think in terms of just, can we bring it back and have another discussion, whether it's the next touch is committee or study session, I think is, is, will be something to determine in terms of schedule.
Councilmember Carson.
Well, I had one other thought that just came into my head about, so we have, we have some mandates that are coming down from the state. And it, I think it's going to be critical for us as a body and the community and our businesses to understand what those changes are going to mean for them and for us. And so, so basically, if we don't have a grasp on what the state is going to do education-wise, you know, rolling out these, I mean, these things cost money to, to, to roll out and to, you know, get, gain compliance. So, what exactly is the state doing? So, those kinds of things, I think we need to understand it's, it's obviously part of what staff would do in evaluating, you know, what, what is maybe unique about what, what our ordinance might do versus what's already being done by the state and how those things work together or don't work together. So, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces and I, so this is, I think, a bigger lift than we think it is, or seems to be at first blush.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it is a decent-sized lift, and I think that we're trying to be very cognizant of, of that ask. And, and potentially this just does end up getting bumped forward a bit. Maybe it's not this year, but maybe it's, it falls into the work plan earlier. So, those are the conversations that we're going to need to figure out and have and follow up on and report back to, to this group on, at the, at the appropriate time. Yeah. Great, great first submission. Thank you very much.
Thanks, team, much appreciated.
Any other items for council talk time?
Councilmember Anderson.
I did actually get a response already back on a questions I sent in to Director Helen regarding last week's conversation on our MFTE pilot program for 12 years, and I just wanted to share that with the council, if that's okay? So, I had asked if it's possible to expand the scope of the pilot program because some of the information that we received on the matrix related to the tax abatement value was really, really important information for us to know about how that program is performing for the eight-year. And so, I wanted to see that data gathered for the 12-year program as well. And then also look at options potentially to cap the amount of the abatements for different levels of affordability and what that would do to the impact of rents in the City of Redmond. So, what problem on affordability does that actually solve? Director Helen actually responded right away. And I also had another question, I'll cover that later. And then she said, yes, we can gather the data on the 12-year value of the tax abatement and report that out when we brief council on the outcome of the pilot. So, that's great. And then, thank you, Director Helen. And then also, the amount of the abatement cannot be capped for different levels of affordability due to prescription by state law. So, we may find that that might be a barrier as part of the program. The other comment I asked was related to the lifetime of structures in terms of what we're expecting in terms of lifetime performance out of some of these buildings that are being built by the developers. And she responded and said that that is typically 50 years. So, those eight to 12-year MFTE, that amount of tax abatement would be the one time for that 50-year period is typical. So, I thought that was helpful to share. And thank you, I really appreciate the prompt response.
Thank you. Great information to share. Anything else for talk time? Councilmember Stewart.
Can Councilmember Anderson send that around to us?
I can. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I have a brief update from the Association of Washington Cities Conference. I kind of blew the most exciting part earlier tonight because I can't tell you guys how exciting this collaboration really was. And if you want more details on the partnership between the library system, the schools and the city, and the continued value that they just keep generating for their residents, I'm happy to chat with anybody about that anytime. The second major topic that I took away a lot of information on from this conference is the role of artificial intelligence in local government and how quickly that is coming right around the corner. For instance, this was a big anniversary year for the Association of Washington Cities, and it was mentioned that in 1985, there was, just like we, how we were talking about AI, today, there was conversation about these things called desktop computers. And one day, they were going to come to your city hall very soon, and maybe someday we'd be able to network them together. The tools that we saw demonstrated around artificial intelligence and the various categories that that means showed me a new appreciation for the opportunity that represents, for access to government, for access to information for, for local residents, no matter what language they speak, for instance, and no matter how convoluted the written code is in, in, in English itself. But also things like public records requests and even some of the conversation we were having earlier tonight with the community development team, you know, I, I got to thinking about some of the tools that someday, very soon, we will see a vendor and a contract sitting before us to evaluate because these new tools are coming online. There are, of course, scary bedtime stories related to all of this too. All of our data, we are streaming this meeting live, which means my face and my voice are putting more and more data out into the public and, and causing risk, right, as one example. So, there are, of course, going to be pros and cons with all the buckets of this, but a ton of great conversation and particularly on the very last day, a session with a professor of, from the University of Washington's I-School on the role of misinformation and how local governments can be doing a little bit more. And so, I'm happy to talk about that with anybody. And then I, I just wanted to report back that I did sit in the Legislative Priorities Committee meeting. I sat next to our lobbyist, Brianna. One takeaway from that conversation, although, you know, the draft, it is still very much a draft, and we know, as we heard in our own report from Brianna and Amy, that, you know, the property tax cap is probably not going to have a policy window in this upcoming year and short session. That doesn't mean that AWC and others intend to take the foot off the gas or the accelerator on that one because they do perceive it to be a big year to continue to do education, given how far the topic made it last year, how much progress that topic made in the legislature compared to the many, many years prior. So, that was just one highlight that I took out of that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anything else for talk time?
All right, seeing nothing, I will remind everyone that our next meeting will actually be held on Wednesday, July 5th. And everyone should enjoy and have a safe 4th of July. And this concludes our, our agenda for the evening. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.